Six thirty, we'll call to order the meeting. And this is the November twentieth, twenty-third regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board for Tarpon Springs, Florida. And I'll ask Board Member Vessi to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation, please.
So the flag is over there in the corner. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I got a couple of starting words to say. I'm gonna kind of pretend this might be our last meeting of the year, although there might be one more, and I thought it was a good opportunity. I don't think anybody really has to stand, but if you want to, that's okay. I might be a little long-winded here, so you might sit. I thought it was a good opportunity to say thanks to some people. It is the week of Thanksgiving, specifically to the staff. It has been a long year, and they have done a lot of heavy lifting. We know that. Some of y'all folks who've come tonight don't know that. Staff has been working overtime with lots of extra stuff, and it's appreciated. So thank you to Ms. Vincent, Nick McNeese. She just changed her name. And, and of course, we've got Ms. Cardash, who's new to us this year. And it's also a great time to say thank you to all the residents that have taken the time out to come tonight, because we don't always see someone, and it is important that the residents have an opportunity to come out and take their time, as well as all the board members here, who are all volunteers and who are spending all their time. Again, it's been kind of a long year, a lot of extra meetings. Okay, so here's the other part, which is tonight, I know there's some stuff to talk about, and in this holiday season, let's hope we've got some patience to listen, some compassion to listen to opposing views, a little empathy to see things that, from another person's point of view, that we might not think is the best, and a little bit of grace to accept a differing opinion. And with that, let's move on.
That brings us to our purpose and mission.
Before we start, I did want to make one comment. It does seem like we have a lot of people here tonight, so I'm glad to see that. But I did just kind of want to make a point. I'm pretty sure the Board of Commissioners kind of moved their schedule around to work around the holidays. I know we have like two back-to-back meetings for them. I just wanted to note that this is a holiday week, so a lot of schools, universities are out, and I want to make sure that we are serving the public. And, you know, I'm one of the biggest advocates for public involvement, but I want to make sure that we're making sure that the applications are on nights when everyone is, can come, and not when there's definitely family obligations. I can't remember the last time we had three applications on a, on a agenda. So I want to make sure that maybe in the future, we plan around that to make sure that the public can come, but I'm glad to see that so many people made it out tonight. That's.
Okay. Thank you for attending the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board meeting. Purpose of the Planning and Zoning Board is to conduct public meetings on the items that come before us. The Planning and Zoning Board has reviewed the evidence in the agenda packet for each item on the agenda in this evening, including the application materials and the staff report. The Board will consider that evidence along with any new evidence or testimony provided at the hearing. The Board will consider all the information provided at this hearing in accordance with the quasi-judicial procedures by which we're bound. I'll ask the city attorney to explain these procedures at the appropriate time. This Board uses these procedures to judge whether the application meets the intent of the city's adopted comprehensive plan and future land use map, and whether the application conforms to the city's currently adopted land development code and zoning atlas. The Board will render its decision on each item in the form of a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners, who takes the final action on the item. The general hearing procedure for each item called by the chair is as follows: staff presentation, applicant presentation, affected party presentation, public input, staff and applicant rebuttal, and finally, board motion, discussion, and vote. That, we already called the meeting to, oh no, we do need a roll, roll call still. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuzkoudis? Mr. Vessi?
Here.
Mr. Zambellus? Mr. Rockline? Ms. Francis?
Here.
All right, I will ask Ms. Cardash, our attorney, to please give the quasi-judicial announcement and swear in speakers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The matters on this evening's schedule before the City of Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board are quasi-judicial in nature. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the Board's function is to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the City of Tarpon Springs Code of Ordinances. This is a legal decision regarding the application before the Board. The Board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application and the applicable code sections. If the evidence demonstrates that the application meets the criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances, then the Board is required by law to grant the applicant's request. If the evidence demonstrates that the application does not meet the code criteria, then the Board is required to deny the applicant's request. Any and all persons providing testimony at this hearing are required to do so under oath. All persons testifying at this hearing must give their name, address, and must indicate whether or not they have been sworn for the record prior to proceeding with their testimony. All testimony and questioning at this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the application before the Board for their consideration. Any Board members who have disclosures such as ex parte communications or conflicts of interest, please make your disclosures at the beginning of the hearing. The following is the established procedure, which will be followed at this quasi-judicial proceeding. First, staff will present its testimony and evidence regarding the application. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to ask questions and cross-examine city staff and any city witnesses. Then the applicant will have the opportunity to present their testimony and evidence. The city will then have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant and any of the applicant's witnesses. Then members of the public opposing and in support of the application will be given the opportunity to provide their testimony and evidence. And just because we received some questions on this tonight, I did want to confirm that the time for public comment, either in support or in opposition, is four minutes per person. And then the applicant and the city will be given the opportunity for any rebuttal testimony and evidence and closing statements for, for consideration. At this time, anyone who's going to speak, please stand and raise your right hand to receive the oath. Do you all promise, swear, and affirm that the testimony you're going to be will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before the City's Planning and Zoning Board this evening? All right. Please make sure when you approach the microphone that you give your name and address and indicate that you've taken the oath prior to proceeding with your testimony.
All right, that brings us to item five on our agenda, Application 23-116. It's rezoning of a property located at 1400 Meyer Lane. Does our staff have a presentation for us, please?
Yes, thank you. Pat McNeese, Planning Supervisor. Okay, this is an application for rezoning at a property located at 1404 Meyer Lane, just southeast of Keystone Road. And the property is about .2 acres in size. It's in the residential low future land use category, and the current zoning is R100A single-family. The proposed zoning is R61 and 2 family. So there is no proposed change to the future land use map, only to the zoning. This is the location of the, of the property, up near, pretty close to Keystone Road. Here's Meyer Lane, predominantly a single-family, larger lot, fairly good-sized homes in this area. Just for context, this is the city sports complex across the street, and, oh, that's about it. Behind the property is an, an office building. Again, here's an oblique area of the site, it's a vacant site, the office building and the single-family development surrounding it. So this property has a bit of a history to it. It, it's in a subdivision called Lakeview Subdivision, which was platted in 1922. It's kind of an interesting plat. Instead of a, kind of a normal grid street system, it created access to these lots by a series of alleys. Over the years, these alleys and lots were closed, reconfigured, combined, resplit, and created the lots, oops, the lots that you, you see here. They were mostly consolidated into larger lots, and this was zoned R100 in this area. And pretty much all of the lots conform with the R100 standards. There were three lots up on Keystone from that original Lakeview plat that were oriented kind of northwest, southeast, towards the road. Those were combined and then resplit into two lots and rezoned to R100A. At the time, there was a survey that showed, they provided a survey that showed conforming lots that would conform to the R100A standards, two lots that conformed to those standards. The applicant or the owner for the subject lot we're talking about tonight then applied for a building permit, began to build, and it was determined that the survey was an error. So that project was abandoned. Eventually, the partial construction of the home was demolished. So this applicant wants to come in at R60 for a couple of reasons. One is, and by the way, the survey has been corrected, so we have a new correct survey showing a narrower lot at the front. The applicant wants to rezone because the lot does not conform with R100A standards, and the applicant cannot get a non-conforming lot variance because it's not an original lot of record. And the other reason is to allow a comparable home to the neighborhood to be built and to take advantage of the smaller setbacks. Rezoning of this property would still only allow one unit. They could not build a duplex because the property's not big enough. So we would be staying under the residential low future land use category and going to an R60 zoning. You can see the zonings around the area. And by the way, Keystone Road is a scenic corridor county-designated. For that reason, this residential office, this office complex carries a restrictive covenant on the floor area ratio, so there are some controls. This is really envisioned as a residential and a really low-traffic-impact, non-residential corridor by forward panellus. So this is the future land use map. As you can see, all this area is RL, and it's got a mix of zonings in it, and then your other land uses around. So the R60 zoning can live under the RL future land use. It's not usual, but it's okay in this case. The density is going to restrict this lot to one single-family dwelling, and it is a, an old plat. It's, it's an old plat, although it's, it's not in that original configuration. So this would allow for an infill lot to build with a house and still stay within that RL density. So the applicant proposes one single-family detached dwelling unit, and that's what would be allowed. Again, this is an infill lot in a residential area. The neighborhood is served by all city facilities, roads, water, sewer, all that, so this is an appropriate rezoning. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning, and we did not receive any responses to public comment. This did go to TRC, I believe, in October, and they didn't have any, any particular comment. And I would like to admit my staff report and pack it into the record, please.
Do Board members have questions of staff?
I, I have one, and I think it was my confusion, because when you looked at the current zoning versus the proposed zoning, it said one and two-family residential. And, and I, I was thinking, how are they going to get the two-family residential units on there? But what you're saying is that their proposal is for one home?
Yes, and because of the residential low future land use, which is five dwelling units per acre, the .2 acres there would, would only allow one.
Okay.
Did it only go through the TRC one time?
Yes, that was on October 5th, 2023.
No, no revisions or?
No, they deemed it complete and ready for hearing.
And for the record, I'd like to read the title of the proposed ordinance for the rezoning. It's Ordinance 2023 dash 23, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the official zoning atlas for .2 acres, more or less, of real property located at 1404 Meyer Lane, on the southwest side of Meyer Lane, approximately 100 feet southeast of Keystone Road, from zoning District R dash 100A single-family residential to zoning District R dash 61 and 2 family residential, providing for findings and providing an effective date.
I have actually one more question, Pat. How many public notices were sent out to the, within 500 feet?
How many?
Do you have that number?
No, I can come, come up with that as, as we go on. Or Kim can maybe help me with that. Yes, so there was mail notice, posting of a sign at the property, and legal ad in newspaper.
Any further questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? Approach the microphone and state your name and address, and then proceed.
Yes, I'm sorry. My name is Gene Carlos Hiloa. My address is 9649 Trumpet Vine Loop in Trinity, Florida. And I did take my oath, as, as mentioned. Excuse me, there you go. So just coming here to say, you know, it's a job well done, you know, what you, what they did here and the work and everything, and I reviewed everything through here. Yeah, it's been a long time to, to get this issue done and try to get a home and build and live in Tarpon, you know. My son over there, he was only one and a half when we were at the site. Now he's about 12, 12 years old, so it's, there's a lot of hoops and hurdles to go through, and, you know, just wanted to, just kind of, just say thank you for, it's been a long time and see this falls through and I can be a citizen in Tarpon.
Do Board members have questions for the applicant?
Just wanted to commend you and bring in your son to this.
Oh, yeah, definitely. It's always government, you know, so I, I work for the city of Dunedin. I'm a lieutenant there, and so I have the free time, I can come do this, but we're, we're just as busy.
All right, well, if there's no questions for the applicant, we'll begin the public comment portion of the meeting. Is there anyone here who wishes to comment for or against this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and bringing the item back to the Board for consideration. I need a motion and second so we can discuss.
Just, just to, I, I believe we had, maybe if Kim looked it up, I'm, I'm coming up with about 109.
That's exactly what I would.
Yep, okay.
Thank you.
I guess I'll go ahead and, and make the motion to approve the, the ordinance number 2023 dash 23. It's also applic, application number 23 dash 116. And in the motion to include everything our, our, our council said, in the motion, unless you want me to read it, but I think it doesn't need to be reread.
I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, please? Or do we have any discussion first, I guess? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambellus?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkoudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you for your service and welcome.
That's our break.
That brings us to item number six, Application 2304 and 2239. That's conditional use approval and site plan approval for a property located at 106 West Park Street. Does the staff have a presentation for us, please?
Yes, this is an application for conditional use approval and site plan approval for the High Tide Cafe. This is located at 106 West Park Street on about a half an acre, and it's located in the commercial general future land use map category, and basically WD1A is called the Waterfront Commercial Fishing Development Zoning District. The conditional use is for a retail food establishment. There's also a storage warehouse proposed, which would be a use, permitted use. Under the site plan, we're looking at a cafe to occupy the existing building, which is a National Register historic building in the city's local historic district. And then there is an additional building proposed for a warehouse, storage of automobiles. The Heritage Preservation Board approved a certificate of approval for this project on March 6th, 2023, and the Board of Adjustment approved a sidewalk waiver for Roosevelt Boulevard on April 26th, 2023. This shows the zoning at the site. Again, the blue is the WD1A, the commercial fishing zoning. To the east generally is a single-family or one and two-family R60. Those, that conservation, this is what it's used for mostly, you just saw it, but it's that conservation zoning for the older subdivisions, and then residential multifamily and some other older single-family plats to the south and west. This is the future land use map, so as you can see, we've got commercial general fishing category going up the, basically the west side of Roosevelt Boulevard. And then these three sites on the east side. And then these three sites on the east side are in the commercial general category. But the three sites plus all that west of Roosevelt are all in that WD 1A zoning district. This is just an aerial showing where the site is on the corner of Roosevelt Park Street, Canal Streets over here. And an oblique of the site showing the existing sponge, previous sponge warehouse. And there's a concrete pad on the site from a previous building at some point in the past. And then the rest of the site is basically crushed limestone and used for parking and various uses. This is just an overlay of the survey of the site, showing the building, the concrete pad, and just a few of the site features in the survey. This is the site plan and landscape plan. So what is proposed on site is to use the existing building as a cafe. The back portion, and the applicant can, you know, elaborate on what the proposal is, but the back portion is to be used for the coffee grounding, roasting process and storage here for the coffee product that will be served. And the front portion is the cafe portion. What we've got is basically a serving counter here. 13 seats inside the building, 12 seats outside on a patio. So the proposal is for 25 seats at this this facility. Basically, it's described by the applicant as a grab and go, kind of a sandwich shop type setup. We'll look at your your code in a minute. But basically, the retail food establishment type of use is something that's envisioned to be appropriate or is in that WD 1A as a support for that working waterfront commercial fishing community that was that is in the zoning. The warehouse for storage of automobiles is proposed basically on that old concrete pad. And then we have landscaping being added, pervious pavers connecting to the city sidewalk on Park Street. Parking in the front and in the rear for employees and patrons. I think, oh, an addition of a handicap space. And then a solid buffer fencing and landscaping to buffer that residential to the east. I think that's about it. The increase in impervious surface is 80 square feet is what they're proposing. So not a big alteration here. And this is just overlaying the site plan on the aerial photograph. This is just showing the elevations of the existing building. And I did add the entire Heritage Preservation Board packet to your packet earlier today. So you can see these renderings and other renderings that were submitted for that. This shows the floor plan a little better. This is the coffee roasting operation and the cafe portion. Again, the sidewalk on Roosevelt Boulevard was waived. There is one on the other side. But the applicant is connecting at city public works request, connecting their sidewalk to this existing Park Street sidewalk. So I wanted to touch on a couple things here. Basically, the TRC did review this. And to answer what I know your question is going to be is probably back here. I think it went like six times. Six times. Yeah, it went a few times. So TRC really had a lot of rounds of review on this one. The last review occurring on October 4th. So it took a little bit to get this whipped into shape mostly. There was some confusion on drainage design. Turned out to be very simple because there's really not much alteration. But we did get the documentation on that. Our city engineer was happy with that documentation. So that was resolved. That was kind of one of the things that we were working on. All the other land development code requirements basically are met with this proposal under under this criteria and the second one. Really, what staff was concerned about on this one is kind of two things. One is the basically whether this retail food establishment, which is meant to serve the the area, commercial fishing, marinas, those types of uses in this area could morph into just a bar and restaurant or or a larger operation. So we wanted you to go ahead and look at the waterfront commercial fishing development standards. Basically, the intent of that district is to provide for development related to the commercial fishing industry and related to water dependent uses. This facility is not on the water, but retail food establishments and retail sales establishments are permitted as a conditional use. These four uses, you can see, those are the four uses permitted by right. And I did put the standards in your, the section of the code in your packet. So you can see it really is oriented to commercial fishing, commercial fishing products, marinas, and warehouses. Conditional uses include retail food establishments, retail sales, and single family dwellings, among other things. And I wanted to go back and just kind of carry that theme and talk about what we've got at the site. So as I mentioned, all this area is WD 1A along with these three lots. So what we've got here is, of course, the high and dry marina, Hollis Bakery, and then a mix, single family. There's obvious, there are commercial fishing party boat operations going on here. And then these three homes at the southern end, those were those were granted a conditional use in 2009. That's these three on the end. And they were granted that with two conditions. One was to, basically, they were granted as commercial fishing operations. So single family homes in this district can have commercial fishing operating out of that property. The second condition was that they build the docks to commercial standards so that they do allow commercial fishing. So those those types of operations can be conducted on those properties. I don't know that any of them are at this at this time. And that would be these three. These two lots are vacant, I guess. And then there's a couple more, single family, a little further out. So to pick back up on the criteria, staff feels like the proposed use in the context of the WD one intent here is compatible. It's the appropriateness of the use that that we are not sure about. The applicant has asked for beer, beer and wine, or will be asking for beer and wine consumption. And they proposed 25 seats. What we would suggest to you if this were approved tonight would be to limit, go ahead and limit the seating to 25 seats and then provide some other safeguards, which we'll get to. With respect to the remaining criteria, the property is in the historic district. It received a certificate of approval in March. We have had some some public comment that we supplied to you regarding that decision. That decision is done. It was not appealed. So that that decision is 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 completed. So that cannot be revisited this evening. And this use isn't adaptive reuse. So one of the things that HPB struggles with in the historic district is, we're all familiar with homes that are now offices and things like that. Adaptive reuse is something that's encouraged in order to keep the life of the building and the integrity of the building alive. Remember, HPB criteria pertains to the exterior physical structure and attributes of the property only. That's it. So again, though this is a national register building and it does comply with the the existing site complies with the land development code. Staff is is going to be recommending, if you if you are going to approve this tonight, to prohibit outdoor entertainment on this site. So the first two criteria for site plan are really the same as your conditional use. This complies with the comprehensive plan and the land development code. This property is served by facilities and complies with concurrency management. And it's expected to comply with all city building codes. So we do have three conditional use conditions and two site plan approval conditions to suggest to you, should you approve this tonight. Again, we are not making a formal recommendation just because it seems to be possibly at a tipping point where it could morph into something else. If we can do sufficient safeguards to to keep it, to meet that WD 1A intent, then then that would be something we'd like you to consider. So restricting to the 25 seats, not you could consider not allowing the sale of alcoholic beverages on the site. Compliance with the building, with the site plan and the HPB certificate of approval would be required. And then no outdoor entertainment. And of course, the site plan has to be consistent, all fees paid. And pursuant to your new newly passed ordinance, the applicant will have six months to obtain a building permit for this project. Okay, are there any questions?
I'd like to start and like to premise this with a little, I'd like a little leeway, Attorney Kardashian, to explain what happened last night in my neighborhood.
Georgie, yeah, we can't hear you.
I'd like to to start, and I'd like to preface my questions with a story about what happened. So I live in this neighborhood. I live on Athens Street where Grand Boulevard comes into Athens. So before I start my questions, I want to preface this story with a drunk driver having an accident right before I approached it. Pat, I'm talking to you. Okay. With my dogs. So this drunk driver tried to, actually did flee the scene on foot. So it's a very high risk. We just had two stop signs put on Grand Boulevard recently. It was a very long presentation, and I just want to start with the fact this is called a High Tide Cafe. Is that correct? That's the name of was to serve? Okay. Can you tell us, are there any boats that can pull up to this location to serve these fishermen?
It's not a waterfront parcel.
It isn't waterfront, okay. I didn't think so, all right. And they want to serve beer and wine.
Yes, that's not before you tonight, but yes, so and let me let me just.
But it's in the application.
Yeah, it is, but let me just remind the board about the procedure. You you can condition it, no alcohol, but conditional use beer and wine on.
I'm aware with conditional use, but it does say in here. It's called the High Tide Cafe, though.
Right.
It's for coffee? Or is it for beer and wine?
Yeah, I was just going to tell you, that's an administrative approval now. So if you all decide to prohibit it, then the city manager would not consider that administrative conditional use.
I'm just making, I mean, it's in it's in the material, so we're reading it, and it's hard to just try to put it out of our heads. And again, I feel like sometimes we're going two steps forward or one step forward and two steps back with everything going down at the Sponge Docks. I really don't feel, there's no formal approval. Am I right in that? There's no formal, so you guys are not approving this?
I'm sorry, there's no form.
Approval of which one?
Not recommending.
Oh, right, right. We're, I mean.
I want that on the record, that you're not formally approving either application? Whether it be for the conditional use?
That's that's correct. There's no recommendation of approval or denial.
And I'll wait until the applicant comes up to ask the rest of my questions.
I do have some questions.
Okay.
Currently, under the WD 1A, that corridor, how many food establishments are there now?
Well, I'm just going to judge based on my drive by drive through. On that corridor up to the canal, I don't think there are any.
There aren't any.
It's zero.
Didn't you say Hollis, that Hollis Bakery had?
It's a plant, it's a manufacturing plant.
Yes, that is the.
Manufacturing plant?
Yeah.
Okay.
When you when you indicated or when the applicant indicated that the back room was for grinding and storage, are they looking to make it more of a of a manufacturing, a coffee manufacturing with ancillary coffee? Is that what, I guess that's a question for the applicant.
That would be a part of it. And, yeah.
And when when we say we limit it to 25 seats, does there, is there anybody in the city that goes out and counts the seats when after they're open?
If there were a complaint, then, yeah, the seats would, we would go out and count the seats and let the applicant know if they are not in compliance. I mean, they they need to pull a business tax receipt. So we would verify compliance at that point, but.
So also, I think you made a comment where it was it was passed by the Heritage Preservation Board, but they only look at the at the at the elevation of the property and its restoration.
They only look at the exterior features.
And not necessarily the uses, that's that's outside their purview.
That's correct.
Any further questions for staff?
Just to clarify for everyone listening, there is no Heritage Preservation Department in the city as well. I want, I don't think everyone is aware of that, that it's just.
There's no separate department, no.
Any questions down there?
Yes, if I could, Pat, what what's the current status or use of the existing metal building that's there? Is it actually operational or is it just owned and vacant?
The applicant can probably address the current. I know it's had basically warehouse, I believe. It's it's acting as now. I think it's had light industrial in it besides originally being a sponge warehouse. So I think right now it would be classified as a warehouse.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have a couple, but I'd like to make sure everybody else gets to go if they've got any.
I may have follow up after yours.
I do have a follow up, but go ahead.
Super. Ms. McNeese?
Yep.
I need a little help understanding a couple of the words you said. I think I got the most of it. You said that staff has got some concerns about the viability as meeting, I think it's the intent, not to use your words or misquote you, of the WD 1A.
Yes.
That it doesn't meet the intent of the WD 1A. Because although it's, and this is what I hear, so correct me if I'm wrong. And then I, my question will be distinct, is that the intent of a grab and go that's supposed to serve the working waterfront would not be a restaurant of 25 seats. It would be a grab and go like a micro 7-Eleven that served ice and sandwiches and soda and water and maybe some bait and fishing poles. Now, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but I think that, is that what the intent of the WD 1A conditional use is? Is a supporting structure for the working waterfront?
Yeah, we believe so. And I did include on page 3 of. And I did include on page three of your staff report, the definition of retail food establishment. And the, this definition actually gives examples, unlike some of ours. The examples they give are ice cream shops, delicatessens, sandwich shops, caterers, and pizza delivery establishment. Probably sandwich shop would be the closest to what we have here as an example.
So that's, that's pretty broad. But it appears, and I'm going to ask you your opinion, that this looks like a dine-in restaurant that's really not there to serve the working waterfront, but is there to be there for tourists? Yes or no?
I would say that it could serve tourists. So if it's a grab and go or takeaway, I also imagine the people going out on the party boat, the people going down the marina to go out for the day, they're going to use it. Okay. This is just conjecture on my part. So you could say it serves that multifunctional working waterfront strip. But yeah, I think it's a little removed from the sponge docks. So I'm not sure, you know, how much walk-up traffic you might get from the sponge docks. But now you're getting out of my, my strength. Maybe there's a business model there, but, but yeah, it could be used by tourists.
So, so thank you. So if you could, I'd also, if you could expand on staff concerns, which are my concern of the project morphing at a tipping point, morphing into something that is not within the W D one A premise. So what, what were your concerns about it morphing?
The concerns would be, so we add beer and wine, which isn't an end-all, but that we get, we have 25 seats. We get morphed into a larger crowd there occupying the space. You know, we can't really control the specific food that they are serving, but you know, those types of things that we get kind of a conglomeration of something where people are staying, they're eating and drinking on site in large numbers. Now we have a restaurant and bar rather than people are stopping. They might use a sandwich there, but a lot of the services is fast, kind of casual restaurant. And that's what we looked at when we looked at traffic was the fast casual classification of a restaurant where you pick up your sandwich, you pick up your coffee, you're going to work, you're going out on a boat or whatever, or you're staying in town. But that's what the primary focus should be of this, to serve that zoning.
Okay, and I've got, I got one more and there might not be a good answer. I'm confused by the request for the auto storage facility. Now, although I'm assuming that is allowed because it's commercial general, but is an auto storage facility a conditional use also? Or is that just a tag along with the application to say, hey, we're going to do that too? How did you understand that?
It's a, it's a storage warehouse. The applicant indicated what he's going to store in it because we asked him to. So it is used by right as long as you're not storing, you know, flammable materials. There is a caveat there as there are in a lot of our zonings about storing, you know, combustible materials. But really, it's a storage warehouse, so he could store almost anything in it that's allowed by fire code and building code.
Okay. And then might be last. So that's a segue question. So adjacent to the site to the east is a zoned R sixty area of which the entire subject property is surrounded by R sixty that appears to be being used completely as a parking lot. This is just a clarification. Is public parking an approved use of R sixty property?
I would have to look. I, I can look, but I don't think public parking lot is a primary use for R sixty.
I'm just curious because I'm looking at the pictures and I'm like, wow, there's a whole bunch of parking going on there. It says R sixty on it. And then we've got this applicant that wants to build a auto storage facility. There just seemed to be some segue there. I'm trying to make a link. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. McNeese.
I got a few follow up questions. So I live further out from the water, from this area, and I have to get flood insurance next year. Now, I understand with the new comprehensive plan, nothing's gone into effect yet, but how is this establishment at all with everything? And I know that we're all going to say it's conditional use. How is any of this 25 even allowed to be conditional use or not approved with these new, with the new like site plans and the new flood zones? Even if they're not.
Okay, so this property.
They're calling it the high tide cafe. They're well aware, we know, we all know in this town, maybe these applicants don't, of the flooding issues that we have.
And we discussed that.
Right where they're trying to build a cafe for water fishermen who would never ever go there. It's not waterfront property.
Right, we discussed that in this staff report, that, that problem area. This isn't a flood zone.
It is?
Yes, it is.
It's hard to hear. So it is a flood zone?
Yes.
And what is it, an A flood zone? I think it's A, A is like the highest. I'm in A and I'm way further away, so it's got to be.
Yeah, I'm sure. It has to be A or V. I know it's not a V.
A, I'm pretty sure.
The existing historic building is exempt from that code as a contributing or national registered building. The warehouse has to comply with the code and the applicant.
A warehouse, right? I mean, they're not, it's not a warehouse anymore. The conditional use is not for a warehouse. It's for a grab and go. I have, I had what was called a grab and go next to my home and it is literally a convenience store without gas. And people come and they go. And what it's going to, what it has turned into is a area where someone's making into a food truck. And the condition, the possibilities here are completely endless. I just want to make sure that you guys are allowed to not approve, right? You could say not just not make a recommendation, but you could also say that you don't recommend because I'm pretty sure you've done that in the past.
We can recommend approval, deny or no recommendation.
But you didn't, in this, in this circumstance, under this application, you chose to just not make a recommendation, but you could have chosen to say not recommend approval.
Could have chosen any of the three.
You didn't. I just want to make it clear that you didn't, under all the opposition that you received.
It's pretty clear, yeah.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions.
Okay.
Your definition section contains a different definition for restaurant versus retail food establishment. And so that's in section two forty-one definitions. The definition of a restaurant under one seventy-eight of section two forty-one is an establishment that serves food and beverages primarily to persons seated within the building. This includes cafe, tea rooms and outdoor cafes. Is a restaurant a permitted or conditional use in the W D one A?
I don't think so. I'll confirm that now.
Okay. And you said in your presentation that a retail food establishment is a conditional use in the W D one A, correct? And pursuant to the code, a retail food establishment is an establishment where the primary use is the sale of takeout food or delivery with limited accessory seating. Such establishments include ice cream shops, delicatessens, sandwich shops, caterers and pizza delivery, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for the record, that a restaurant is not a permitted or conditional use and a retail food establishment is a conditional use in this particular zoning district. Yes. The other thing I wanted to kind of clarify for the board as we move through this is there's actually two components. And for this particular application, because of the conditions you're recommending, I was going to ask that the board pass them separately since they have different criteria. One being, so there would be a separate motion for the conditional use and then a separate motion for the site plan. And I also wanted to ask, there was some discussion regarding the warehouse. The warehouse is, is not part of the conditional use, correct?
That's correct.
The warehouse is part of the site plan.
That's correct.
And so as part of the site plan, that's what would have to meet the additional flood regulations as a nonhistoric structure as on the site plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have any other questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to make a presentation? And if you'll approach and state your name and address, please.
My name is Kenneth Saya of four oh three Roosevelt Boulevard. Actually, I am, my house is directly across the street from, from this property. In fact, Pat can show it to you on the oblique if she can go to the oblique.
This one?
That's my house right there. So I hear a lot of concerns. I guess I'll let you all ask, do you want to hear my presentation of what we're proposing? We are proposing a cafe style sandwich shop to walk in. There's not going to be any waitstaff. You walk in, you order your sandwich, you get your drink and you're welcome to leave or you're welcome to go sit in a, in a seat if there is one. We, we have no intention, I mean, 25 seats in a restaurant business is nothing. It really is. And that's all we intend. We don't intend to have anymore. We purposely limited it to that so we could have a minimal staffing of one or two people in there. And that, that's really it. We're, we haven't really even decided to even have any evening hours. There's no reason to. We're really just hoping to capture the, the morning and afternoon crowd. And the, the, the traffic, we're not looking to add traffic. We're going to capture what's already there. If, all you'd have to do is go down there in one afternoon and watch the traffic up and down that street. We have commercial trucks, I mean, big commercial trucks up and down it all day from Hellas to the sponge docks. The, actually Officer Bowman and I have been discussing and he's currently writing up recommendations. We have asked to, to do a three-way stop. At a minimum, I believe he's going to get us crosswalks because we have a ton of foot traffic from Spring Bayou all the way down to the docks. And there's days out there, people are going so fast, I feel like somebody's going to get hurt. So we have gone to the trouble of asking the city to do something to calm traffic down and a three-way stop would be great because the one way they don't even slow down. They just all go, you know? Everybody knows Tarpon's not real strict on stop signs and none of the people that live here are either.
Good way to make headway with the city is to insult it, but go ahead.
I'm not insulting this city. It's, it's, it's just some levity here. I mean, we're, we all live here, we all see what goes on. I'm just stating the facts and I have no desire to make this. I mean, like I said, my house is across the street. I have no desire to turn this into a zoo down there. I have no desire for drunk drivers to be out there. I wouldn't, wouldn't allow it. This is not a bar. This is not an establishment you're going to go sit there and drink a six pack. This is a place you're going to come in for lunch, grab your sandwich, grab your White Claw, go sit out at the picnic table outside and then go on your way. I'm not going to have the staff to support anything like that. One of the things I would like you to consider instead of curtailing the, the alcohol is we just have an agreement. I have no waitstaff because the, the design right now is for people to go to the counter to get, to make their order, grab their sandwich and like I said, go either have a seat on one of the tables inside or go out to the picnic table outside. That is it. We feel like we're going to serve the boat house. There's got to be 500 or more boats in there. That traffic is already there. I, I'm going to have a parking lot for eight cars. I'm not going to put a dent in the traffic that's there. If I capture one half of one percent, I'll be happy. You know, it's, it's an existing situation. There's been concerns about the flooding. I don't have any control over the Gulf of Mexico. That is, that's a problem that's, that's there. I bought the property knowing that was there. In fact, I'll tell you the story of how I got to this point. We bought the property across the street and then I had that house built. Fell in love with the building as many people do. I had my little Model A truck parked out there. Kids come and they go, I let them sit on it. I don't care. Let them have a good time. It's, people are oddly attracted to this pile of sheet metal because there's nothing attractive about it. It's just for whatever reason, we all flock to it. It's a cool looking building and it's got history. I have a, and that's an, that's the intent of using this building for that is to celebrate the, the building itself and the history. I had the pleasure of meeting Ham Sally, who was kin of the, of the Mears. And there's, it is the oldest sponge building in Tarpon Springs. And there's just a ton of history there. I've got pictures from when they were actually processing sponges in there that I want to get made up and, you know, as big as you can. Some of the old pictures are kind of hard to do that with, they get too grainy. But just to do something like that to celebrate that building. To truthfully, what I use it for now is my own personal cars. I'm a car buff. I got old, you know, Model As and, and, and some old Corvettes and stuff that I like to tinker on. And that's why I want the new building because in, in the sponge building, I can't get anything done because people want to come in and check it out. And I'm not the kind of guy to say no. I'm like, no, come on in, take a look at it, ask all the questions you want. So I end up losing a lot of time to that. So it'll kind of help me if I can shift gears over to that and, and let people come in and enjoy a part of Tarpon's history. And I can't think of a better use. You're not going to have, we don't have a sponge industry anymore. I think we all know that. The little bit that's there.
I would disagree with you.
You better, you better watch out. You're saying, you're stepping over the line, sir. I'm sorry. You've said a lot of things you've out of line tonight with the history of Tarpon and the sponge industry. And I'm just saying you should just really be a little bit careful about what you're saying. You're not helping yourself right now.
Okay.
I know, but I'm, I'm sorry, but you.
I'm sorry. I, I don't, I don't agree with your attack on this.
I'm trying to be patient.
I'm trying to show a building that I think should be celebrated by Tarpon Springs. Now, if you are welcome to buy the building, if you want to go put a sponge industry in there. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to be rude here, but you, you at least, I deserve my time to, to get my point out. And it is, is truly for a celebration of that building.
I'm going to withdraw from the vote tonight. I just want to listen. I'm just, I'm withdrawing because I'm, I'm too prejudiced against what your proposal is tonight. So I'm withdrawing from the vote.
Okay, thank you.
So you, you can't do that.
No.
You can only do that if you have a legal conflict of interest. If you have a legal conflict of interest, then you can, can withdraw from the vote. Otherwise, you're required to vote, to vote one way or the other. I would request that you limit your.
Comments.
Comments.
I will do that.
And if you have questions for the applicant, that you can ask questions.
I will. Thank you.
Okay. Questions?
Do we have other questions?
I have questions. I got a couple of questions.
Just to re, repeat what I thought I heard. What's your position on the alcohol premise? No alcohol?
No, I would, I would like to get the beer and wine. And like I said, I mean, it would like to be able to have people come in, grab a sandwich, grab a beer or a wine cooler. Or my wife and I are actually into ciders. We don't have anybody around here doing ciders, but on the east coast, they have a cideri over there, something I would love to get into eventually. You know, can't do it all at once.
It was, I'm just going to address some of the things that you said because, and, and this is why, and I'm going to explain why. My great grandfather was a sponge diver. My father grew up where you said that, that place serves no purpose and it has nothing to do with Tarpon. My father has memories.
Excuse me, I did not say that.
No, 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 no. It's my turn now. Is it not my turn, Attorney Kardashian?
Yes, but you are, you're mis, you're misstating what I said.
I'm going to ask you a question.
Questions?
What did you say about that it has no use or in Tarpon anymore and that it's sitting there and, and nobody cares about what it is anymore?
That is not what I said.
Well, then we don't have a court order.
You're hearing what you want to hear. I did not say that.
No, 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 sir. I heard exactly.
I said the sponge industry is not what it was back in the twenties and thirties. It is not. And I mean, if we can sit here and deny that and run this out, but that's not the case.
I go by your house every day. I know exactly what you're talking about. Okay. But if you're not, the beer and wine, from what I've heard from staff, is not on tonight's conditional use. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So then if it's, but again, this is part of the problem we have with conditional. Okay, so then, if it's, but again, this is part of the problem we have with conditional use. It is, oh, well, that's not on tonight's thing, this is a conditional use. But he's made it very clear, he wants to do that, and we've made it very clear that it's not a restaurant, which Attorney Kardashian has made certain that it is not. Okay? And I, I just want to make a comment, and this is not a question, but listen. We know you'll make money there. Everybody makes money at the Sponge Docks.
That's not on, that's not on the agenda today.
Yes, but you're, you're, you're selling it what, of course, everybody knows. You're trying to make money through what we have created for you. And I just want to make that clear. So you're welcome. And I don't have any other questions.
I, I have, I do have some questions.
Okay.
Okay, maybe this should be directed at staff is, I guess food truck might be an issue. Is, is that, would be a, a location that a food truck would be permitted?
A food truck would, uh, the applicant would be able to apply for a food truck um, and go through site plan approval for that. But, this, if this is approved as a retail food establishment, you know, there's already a kitchen there, so the, the, the purpose of an accessory food truck is, is usually someplace like a bar that doesn't have a kitchen. So we, we would be morphing-
There's a difference.
Could potentially be morphing into the, the restaurant category.
Yeah, there, there is a difference between a takeout place where you make sandwiches that, that, uh, the, the, you know, in the restaurant business, you could do much more in a food truck if you were just a, a sandwich place because of hoods, et cetera. Um, that's just, so the question is, if you want to put a food truck, could you put a food truck? Because there's, that's an expansion of menus and stuff like that.
But it's not what we're asking.
Maybe they could answer that question.
So the way the food truck ordinance is written-
Can you introduce yourself for the record?
Thank you. Renee Vincent, planning and zoning director for the city. The way the food truck ordinance is written currently, you can have an accessory food truck-
On your own property.
But it has to be, it has to be where there's an existing food or drink establishment. So, once, if, if he is successful and he has this food and drink establishment, then I think that would, that would set you up, or would, could potentially set him up to come back and ask for an accessory food truck under the ordinance. It's, it's a-
Being asked for tonight?
No, that is, that is, that is an administrative decision. It goes to the technical review committee.
So that wouldn't even come before this?
It would not, no, sir.
Six times again, maybe?
What other questions did I have?
While, while he's thinking of some other questions, I did have one. Do you have any planned hours of operation for this business?
Sunrise to sunset is the best I can give you right now.
Any other questions for the-
Yeah, I have one. I, I see Robin sitting next to you, and I just want to make sure it's not a conflict. Are you, uh, have an ownership interest in this, or you just here as a contractor?
Robin Hancock, 623 East Tarpon Avenue.
You've, you've been sworn, correct?
I, pardon?
You've been sworn?
Yes.
I just want to make sure it's not a conflict for me.
I do not have an interest other than helping them get through the heritage preservation.
Okay.
I helped them with all these applications, headed up with the engineering for the site plan.
All right, I just want to make sure I didn't have a conflict. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, but I want to wait till everybody's done.
Go ahead.
Super. Mr. Seiya?
Yes, sir.
Did I pronounce that right?
Yes, you did.
Justin, please. Kenneth, right?
Yes.
I liked your presentation. I appreciate you coming and sharing your vision of what you're thinking because nobody knows.
Right.
Right? And, and frankly, I liked what you had to say. Just about working on cars and tinkering, and it is a beautiful building. I feel the same way you do and other people do. I think you're spot on. I've rolled by that thing a thousand times and thought, what a fantastic building for no apparent reason.
No.
It's wonderful.
It's a weird attraction to me.
Just as it is, right?
It is.
But that there lies in the deepest concern. You are genuine, except that you're not going to be there forever.
Right.
And I think, and I'm not going to speak for anybody, but I'm, I, I do have some questions, but I want to preface it with this, is that the concerns is once the door is slipped open and a finger gets behind it, that farther down the road, it has, I'll use staff's term, morphed into something that is no longer you or no longer welcome. Then therefore, I would ask you this. Are you willing to forego nearly all outside seating and all liquor and alcohol and all possibility of music forever?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, it's not a practical business model.
Super. I just had to ask because I understood in the spirit and the intent of the application, place a tinker on cars, preserve the building, maybe sell a couple sandwiches. That would mean no seats, no alcohol, no music, forever.
That's right. Well, it wouldn't be open to the public at that point.
Okay.
Because the truth is, I, I have a, a, you know, an obligation to pay taxes like everybody else does. If I cannot generate revenue that way, then I'm going to be forced to come up with another way. Now, it might mean I'm reduced back to, working it back to WD-1A, and I'll stack crab pots to the sky. And everybody knows how they smell, but I mean, that's, that's my option. I've got to, I've got to pay my taxes.
God bless. I, and I think that is a great answer because the intent, as I just heard, is to morph it into a dining event venue to maximize profit. That is what I just heard. And I love the smell of crab pots.
All right.
That's the end of my questions. Thank you very much.
But I had one question. Did someone force you to buy the property?
No, no, no. I don't like your questions.
Okay, well, but you can answer it. I mean, it's, I just, you said like, you said like, I have to-
You just vote no and don't even worry about it.
No, no, I just asked you the question. Did you, someone forced you to buy the property? But it was a willing, it was a willing decision, right? I mean, you bought it.
Yes, I did. I bought the building for private use.
And you can sell it? I mean, that's-
Well, hold on, hold on.
Just ask, but you can't. Just ask, that was my, in my question.
Okay.
I, I, I'm sorry. I, I gotta be honest with you people. This is, this is a horrible way to treat somebody that's trying to bring some promise into Tarpon Springs and reuse a beautiful building.
Well, first-
Open it up to the public.
First of all, first of all, I, I was gonna, I was gonna comment on, I appreciate the fact of restoration because that is what is needed. You know, my concerns, uh, have nothing to do with the restoration and, 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 you know, whether or not there was a, a, an alternate use that you could think of other, because I, I'm just telling you, and, and I'll save it for discussion, but, you know, I, I don't know if that's an appropriate place to do that. But I will leave that up to this board when we have, when we open up for discussion. But I, I commend you for wanting to renovate it and, and, and put it back to, it, back to its glory. But we may have, I may disagree with, with the use.
I'm just going to make a comment. Some of us are up in, in age. I'm one of them. I remember that building where they used to play card games in there. They used to make Greek Gabumah have parties there during the Easter celebrations. Well, yeah, but that's, that's the history of it. It goes back that it wasn't just producing sponges as a profession. They were celebrating Easter, celebrating Christmas, they were cooking, they were playing poker and gambling back there. I remember as a little kid going in there and there were music, they were singing, they were, they were playing the Bazooka. So what he may be offering is just a different version of that. But it is a version of some celebration that gets done in that building. And I'm just, observation. And I'm old enough to say that.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that. I, I mean, and, and I'm not trying to destroy the neighborhood, except my house is across the street. Uh, you can't imagine that I'm going to turn this into a bar or a nightclub. It's not, it's not what I want. I genuinely want to share the building. This is, this is the best way to offer it to the public. I can't think of another way to offer it to the, to, to public access, uh, any other way. And, and, and yes, to make a profit so I can pay my taxes.
I, I appreciate what you're trying to do with the building. I love the building. I, I love the, the old truck sitting out front and, and all that. I appreciate all that. I, I do have some concerns about the compatibility of the use and, and, uh, you know, I'll have to resolve those before the-
Can I ask you what your concern is?
I'm just not sure that's-
I don't think that that's appropriate in this circumstance.
So if, if he wants to know so that he can modify his application or in, in other ways confirm with the board? Well, if he's trying to get feedback from the board, I think, and I think that, yes, that is appropriate.
I'm, I'm just concerned as, as others have been about the, the number of people that might be there and, and that it's, the morph, morphing more and more, it seems to me, towards something a, a little more active than, than what should be, uh, in that location, I suspect.
But what, what you're, what is your concern? Because the, the location, I mean, my house, like I said, is across the street. It is not a house. It is a waterfront commercial property first. I'm a, I'm a licensed boat captain. My intention when I bought the property was to do charters out of there. So I bought that property with absolute wise, eyes wide open, that this is a commercial piece of property, is not residential. And so you cannot consider those homes as residential. They are commercial first. Am I not correct?
Yes, we can consider them as, they are resi-, I live in the same zone. We can also consider them as residential. They are homes.
Unless you're on that WD-1A, it's what you're not.
I, I, my house is also there, in, in different districts. Not that one, but I'm a, I'm a commercial residential home, so I can consider my home a home, sir.
Okay, but I mean, the simple fact is, all of us that bought those houses understand that that is, that is waterfront commercial.
But I do have, I do have a question. And, and I look at, when I looked at this, I looked at the intent of the WD-1A. And it says to provide for the development of related, excuse me, the district is established to provide for the development related to the commercial fishing industry and related water-dependent uses. And I look at the permitted uses. I look at the conditional uses. I suspect the conditional uses are there to support the intent of the, of the, of the, uh, of the ordinance or the zoning. So my question to you is, what you're trying to do, how does it support the intent of, of the, uh, WD-1A?
I mean, it's just a question. And I'm not being sarcastic.
That's, that's fine.
But fishermen got to eat. It's, it's a sandwich place.
Are they even here tonight? Oh, Bobby, you're a commercial fisherman.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm so sorry.
There, there's my shipwright.
Can he answer the question, please?
Please.
The, the, the idea is that it is a conditioned use. It's listed in there as a retail food establishment. How we define that, you know, you can contrail me down to five seats and it, and you might as well just say no. That's the reality. And I don't really see why a handful of people coming in there and grabbing a beer and a sandwich and going and sitting down, they're not going to be there to just loiter around and drink. They're going to be there to grab their sandwich and go. I, I, you know, I, we can, yes, I can see everybody's concern about it morphing into a restaurant. I, but, but the, the, because you think it can turn into that, is that a good enough reason to tell me no? I'm telling you as a man in my word that that's not the intent. Now, yes, I could die and somebody else could buy it. You're going to have to deal with that. You know, my intention is to do exactly what I'm telling you. And it's within the guidelines of WD-1A. So I'm asking you, please, do, I'm sorry, I mean, and I, I appreciate what you said, but do you understand, I mean, from, from a member on the zoning board, I, I don't look at your lifetime. I look at the, beyond your lifetime. And the, sometimes the decisions we make have to extend beyond the owner's lifetime because circumstances change, owners change. And what we have to do, where you, you could say I'm a man of my word and I believe you, I don't have any reason to doubt, doubt you. The fact that you know Robin, I would tell you, you're a man of good character. But the decisions that this board makes have to go beyond your lifetime and, and have to continue or run with the land, so to speak. So that's why, no offense to you, that's why some of the decisions, when we look at, at, at these things, as Mr. Vessi said, is what happens if something happens to you? These are the things that we have to consider when, when looking at approving or not approving something. And that's, it's just, that's, that's simple. And I appreciate what you're saying, sir, but the, but the reality is you're going to impugn me for a what-if. I'm not impugning you. I'm not impugning you. If, 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 if you won't give me a conditional use that's granted into WD-1A, then I would say that that's an impugnment on a what-if.
Can I ask? Can I ask staff a question? So under the conditional use approval conditions, item one, it's saying that the retail food establishment is restricted to a maximum of twenty-five persons. Are you asking for more than twenty-five people?
No, sir.
Okay. Am I correcting my assumption by that conditional condition of number one? It's allowing up to twenty-five people, which each person gets a seat, right?
Correct.
And he's not asking for more than that, and it's not going to morph to more than that because if it morphs before more than that, then you've got a code violation.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I had.
I, I have a comment, and it would be for the, uh, for the presentation that you just gave. First of all, I, I appreciate your vision of moving things forward. I'm a believer of doing things gradually because sometimes it's tougher to retract something that's already done, but revitalizing the existing, existing structure is, is also a, a great adage, and, and I appreciate your concern for doing that. I think what I'm hearing from both sides to some degree is there needs to be a compromise. It cannot be your way or our way. And to do that, we may not be both, you know, as happy as we would like to be. Uh, I think you may have to restrict and accept some conditions that you're not too apt to do, uh, and we may have to do the same. So that the, you know, compromise is defined as both sides being equally unhappy or equally happy, depending upon which way you want to look at it. But I think everyone is afraid of what the potential is down the road, and this is another end of the funnel, so to speak, just like the hotel property was, where it can be too much of a good thing in the wrong place. There's, there's the right thing in the right place. This may be that, but it's our job to limit that and try to rein in the possibilities because once there, once it occurs, it's very tough to rein back in regardless of what agency or what jurisdiction it is. So I, I ask that you consider giving as much as possible, and I'll ask the rest of this board to consider doing the same. Thank you.
Another question for staff, and then I'll, I should have read the full item one, but it does talk about, you know, the retail food establishment restricted to a maximum of twenty-five persons, combined indoor and outdoor seating capacity, so we kind of addressed the twenty-five person, and shall not sell alcoholic, alcoholic beverages indoor or outdoor, in, on, on-premise consumption. So there have been establishments that could not sell alcohol, but they allowed bring your own bottle in. Is that something that's prohibited?
So that-
Staff recommendation is not-
I know, I know, I know, I know. It would be staff administration, but is that considered alcohol beverage if someone's bringing alcohol and if we assume that?
That would be on-premise consumption, um, if they're consuming it on-premise. Another iteration of this, I don't know if the applicant is open to it, would be you could go for a two APS license that allows carryout beverages, a bottle of wine or whatever it is, specialty beers, something like that.
As a carryout.
For off-premise consumption, uh, you could limit the hours of operation or the hours of alcoholic beverage sales.
Okay.
Those are things that could be done. So, those are things to consider.
Thank you.
So I, I do want to make sure that you understand, you do have the ability to impose conditions as a condition of approval, so, you know, whether it would be, you know,[1773.24] like Pat said, limit of hours where, you know, if you were going, you know, if you're inclined to allow on-premise consumption but limit the hours, if you don't wanna allow on-premise consumption, maybe you allow package sales only and things like that. So it is within your purview to add conditions that we have not maybe suggested, if that helps you get to a consensus.
I've got some ideas, too.
Okay. The...
I would like to answer the question that you've all asked. This 25 occupancy rate. We have this little thing called the Florida Building Code. Occupancy rate is based on the square footage available. That's where we're at. Any additional seating would have to go back through this entire process to add square footage to this building, starting with the heritage preservation, TRC, and then going for our building permits. Therefore, the 25 increasing in the future should not even be discussed tonight. The Water Building Code will direct based on the occupancy.
I'll be a little bit argumentative, but it doesn't regulate outdoor seating.
Well, I've been sitting here stewing.
I know you have, and God bless you. Well, just, I just wanna... The other limiting factor on seating is, basically, is your bathrooms. And I don't know what the situation is with that, building code-wise. It's not my area of expertise, but... So there are limitations with fire code, you know, bathrooms and things of that nature that may not allow much more seating than what... It's conjecture, but the outdoor seating would be, would only be limited by that restriction of bathrooms and things like that. So just, otherwise, I agree with you.
The, if we don't have any more questions for the applicant, can we move on into the public comment portion of our meeting? You will receive the opportunity to make rebuttal comments after the public section, so... Okay. For public comments, I'd like to ask our attorney first. How do we define affected parties? In case we have any affected parties in the audience?
So your affected parties are actually defined in your resolution. I'm gonna pull that up and read it verbatim. So you have Rule 3.2 intervenors. Intervener status will be granted to a person if the person requesting such status demonstrates to the board that he or she is an adversely affected person. An adversely affected person is a person who will suffer a negative effect to a legally protected interest as a result of the quasi-judicial action sought by the applicant. The alleged adverse interest may be shared in common with other members of the community at large but must exceed in degree the general interest in community goods shared by all persons. Intervener status may be granted by the board to a representative, an organization, or group of persons who have a substantial and compelling interest in the matter, under consideration if the organization or group of persons can demonstrate that it is prepared to present competent and relevant evidence, which would be significant assistance to the board in making its quasi-judicial decision. Persons, organizations, or groups desiring intervener status shall file a request to be granted intervener status with the Planning and Zoning Department no later than five days prior to the date of the scheduled hearing. And a copy of such request shall be mailed to the applicant. Have we received anything?
No.
Okay, so based on that, that means that unless that was received five days prior to tonight's hearing, that we cannot consider anybody for intervener status based on your rules of procedure.
Okay, well, that would bring us just to general public comments. As was mentioned earlier, everyone has four minutes. You can request additional time to be gifted from another member of this public or the member of the public that's here. You get two minutes with that, and you can add up to make a maximum of 10 minutes, I believe, by adding several people's time on. We'll try to organize these, since there's quite a few of you, to persons in favor initially and then persons against the application. Would the first person in favor approach the microphone and state your name and address, please?
My name is Demetrius Mostopoulos. My address is 216 High Street. It's about 100 yards from the property in question here. And I have been sworn in. I think Pat did a phenomenal job covering all the material that is documented regarding this conditional use. And although she was not able to recommend or deny or, you know, go in any direction, the fact, to me, all came across that the property is eligible for conditional use, up to the 25 seats that came to my attention here now. And a restaurant with 25 seats is not gonna survive as a restaurant. It is gonna be primarily a takeout business by the nature of the location, the charter boats that are there, and the marina that has, Ken said, 500 boats. I would say probably right. And people go to that marina daily, weekends, and the traffic always flows. Like he said, you could sit on that corner, and you could count cars, and all that traffic's there. And a lot of people would wanna probably go in and say, "Hey, I'm gonna grab a sandwich and take it on the boat with me." So I had a lot of things to say, but I think, in summary, it is just... Looks like it should go through based on what's written in your documents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person in favor.
My name is Steve Odom at 303 Grand Boulevard, down the road from you, I presume. I have been sworn in. Thank you very much. I'm not gonna deal with any of the legal here. That's up to y'all and up to you. Y'all know what you're doing as far as zoning. It does comply. There's no debate there. I'm here for a practical reason. Living on 303 Grand, I see the traffic. I see the walking traffic. If you were on my porch at 303 Grand yesterday and Saturday and Friday, you would've seen all the walking traffic. It's there every day and highly on weekends and very highly on special events. People going to Bayou docks, Bayou docks, Bayou docks, asking directions 'cause GPS doesn't take 'em the right way, as we well know. The first time I saw that building, I said to my wife, "I think that'd be a great place for somebody to have a little cafe." That's exactly what I told her four years ago when we moved here. If you show a picture that you showed earlier of the parking behind, you'll notice on that picture that you showed, all the cars that were parked there, all of them. There's many of them there. Where were they? Michael's Shrine, customers, parking. They're there all the time. Walkers are there all the time. What a novelty for the city of Tarpon Springs to have a cafe halfway between the docks and the bayou for people to go and grab a sandwich or grab a Coke or a water. What a unique novelty for the city of Tarpon Springs. I even mentioned to the mayor about making a walkway from the bayou to the docks and have maybe chalk art event on a weekend and stop at the cafe or stop at the Michael's Cathedral or Shrine. What a great opportunity for you to enhance this community by passing this tonight. And in my opinion, there's no greater person and people to have a business in this town as Sarah and Ken. They're wonderful, wonderful people, and I would vouch for them. A quote I heard many years ago, and I'll just leave with that. I'd rather attempt something great and fail than to do nothing at all and succeed. I would hope you don't wanna do nothing at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person in favor, please.
Hi there, my name is Stephanie Brady, 260 Sand Crane Way. I have been sworn in. I am in favor of the applicant. I can only speak to the fact that these are hardworking, honest, salt-of-the-earth people, and I support any small business that would be beneficial to Tarpon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person in favor, please.
Hi, my name is Renee Plaza. I'm at 419 Roosevelt Boulevard, so I'm directly across the street from the property in question. And I've known Ken and Sarah since probably before they moved in there, actually. They're great people. They have a true heart for a cafe on this corner. That's what it started out to be, and that's what we all intended to be. As far as the building goes, as was mentioned earlier, you have no idea how many people stopped by that building just to take photos out in front with the sponge name and ask about that building. So if there's any way that we can celebrate a sponge building in Tarpon, I think it's a terrific idea because most of them are sitting idle and just getting painted and painted. So, gosh, if we could only celebrate some of those, and especially this one, that seems to be one of the ones that's the oldest and has had an opportunity to be celebrated in the past. So I'm for this. As a matter of fact, I have a commercial fishing boat behind my house. Someone asked that question, as well as renters. So we have people coming in and out of that area, as well as the lot to the north of 419. There are another four lots there where people are renting. So in addition to the marina coming by, people going to the bayou, people walking through, we have renters locally as well. And I think this would be a positive spot in the community. Thank you.
Ma'am, before you left, before you leave, can you please confirm that you did receive the oath?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you.
Thank you. Next person in favor. Seeing no more in, or you in favor, sir? Yeah.
My name is Cole Seah. I currently reside at 403 Roosevelt Boulevard as well. I have not been sworn in yet.
Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on the matters here before the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board?
I do.
All right, thank you. Please proceed.
Many of you, I'm sure almost none of you, know my face yet, but no one, aside from my family, my parents, that is, are more invested in this project as I am. You don't know who I am because I'm pretty busy just trying to be a contributing member of Tarpon Springs. I proudly work for Gospel Boats, and I'm very proud of the history of this town. And you will find that no one wants to bring chaos to Tarpon any less than I do because, truthfully, I can't stand any other city around us. So it is nice to meet all of you in person. I do hope that we can work together and honestly find a united goal here because if something were to happen to my father tomorrow, I'm gonna be the face that you're talking to. So with all that, I am in favor, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry. Anyone else in favor?
My name's Bobby Goss. And I live at 825 Carolina Avenue, and I have been sworn in. I grew up across the canal from Ken and Sarah, where they live now. My father lives there still. We've seen that property, you know, throughout our childhood and everything. We'd really love to see that thing preserved as well. And I think Ken and Sarah would be a great fit for that. And he didn't mention, but he has just become a board member at the Tarpon Springs Historical Society. So he has a vested interest in preserving this property. And I think he would do a wonderful job, and I think a cafe would be wonderful there. And even if I still live with my father, I think it'd be a great spot for people to hang out there and grab a sandwich. I can't wait to eat lunch there. Thanks for letting me speak to you today.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Seeing none, the first person against the proposal.
Tina Bukavales, 115 Athens Street, and I have been sworn in. I do wanna say at the outset, I'm not entirely against this proposal, but I have some major concerns about effects on historical resources. First of all, let's just say, this is our oldest sponge warehouse. It's not only in the downtown historic district. It's in the Greettown Historic District, and I believe it was initially listed on the National Register as a freestanding individual site. So it's very important here in the city. It is one of our most historic properties. And you've talked, I'm gonna try to say this very fast, but there's more to the history than the Mears. I mean, Ernest Mears was very important. He worked with John Chaney for a long time. He had his own business. He was very successful. He bought sponges, was involved in other things. He built the sponge warehouse in 1905. But the Mears family, then, after having it in the family for a while, sold it to the Tsarakas family in the 1980s. They were in the sponge business for three generations. Kostas came in 1905 himself, was in the sponge industry. Besides that, he made charcoal for sponge boats at the corner of Athens and Mill Street, in the yard there. His son Nicholas operated a sponge hooking boat, the image of which is carved into his tombstone. In the 1970s, his son George owned and operated one of the last sponge hooking schooners. And his grandson, Gus Tsarakas, also owned a hooking boat and used the warehouse for a sponge distribution business in the 80s and 90s. In fact, it said Tsarakas Sponge Company all over the building. Then about 10 years ago or so, it was bought by the Hulus family for use in their bridge painting business. The bridge painting businesses are essentially the continuation in a different form by the same people who are in the sponge business. From one of the most dangerous businesses in the world, but under the water, it went to one of the most dangerous businesses in the air. Same people. And he kept the way the building looked during the sponge business. And that's great adaptive reuse. I know the applicant also appreciates this building. The main problem I have with the potential adaptive reuse is the signage, which I don't feel that the Historic Preservation Board actually addressed very well. And you have in that packet a picture that was submitted then but was perhaps, a little disingenuously, not submitted now of what the signage on the building may look like with a large Model T on the front. I think it's appropriate to use this possibly for a cafe if it all works out in other ways. But to change the exterior of this extremely historic building by putting an icon of a hobby of the applicant as opposed to the actual historic use of the building seems inappropriate. You know, model cars are nice, but that has nothing to do with our history. And I just feel that it kind of defaces that history and doesn't celebrate it or add to it in any way. It's fine if he wants to use the warehouse for storage, okay. But we should, if we wanna celebrate our history, then we should maintain the building as it is in its historical form as far as we can possibly go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next person against, please.
Here to Lacus 514 Ashland Avenue. Yes, I was sworn in, and let's get a few things clear. Maybe the attorney, when I'm done speaking, can clarify, but with all this regards to the alcohol stuff, I believe they can apply directly to the Bureau of Alcohol Licenses and Such... Licenses, and such, and get their license directly, bypassing any restrictions you may apply. So that's a legal question I would like to see answered at some point. As it's been stated in testimony, a lot of traffic, tourists and such, and as it was pointed out by Mr. Vessi earlier, is this a stopoff for the tourists and what becomes of that? But I had thought about this a little bit earlier in the regards that if you can stop by and pick up a sandwich and a beer, then what about the other people that people in the neighborhood have concerns about just hanging out in the area, eating their beer, drinking their beers, eating and then walking around behind another building, and no public restrooms and all that stuff? So you've heard complaints about the homeless and other things going on in that area, especially with the apartment buildings there in that regard. But I want to really go more to, and it's not a referendum on the applicant's character. Let's put that on the table now. They can be devoted churchperson, helps out in all various ways, but we have to look at this stuff. And what I'm gonna go back to is the intent. The intent. Because I was here on the board when we were passing these things, and the intent was to find ways to revive the commercial waterfront district. One point out, Ms. Vincent can maybe further elaborate, but at one point, we had a maritime committee that evaluated that stuff. They talked to Cox Seafood, to Pelican Point, all those people about finding ways to revitalize this. We're now looking in the process of fixing the dredging and attracting maritime industries. I've proposed to the Board of Commissioners, and I will say it here, to the Planning and Zoning Board, we have the ability, and if you talk to Joan Jennings from the Public Arts Committee, she's got a contact through the USDA about agua culture to set up grant programs to train and attract people to come in and start retraining to do sponge diving. The sponges are back out there, it's just no one's going out to get them. You can talk to Mark Washburn. He does distribution for sponging. There is that industry there that's latent and can be revived. I keep hearing about fixing the sponge docks, and even in your displays, you have pictures of all these sponges hanging down in the boats and everything. You want that? You gotta encourage the sponging industry and the maritime industry. So the purpose of this district was to provide an area to protect it from the encroachment of these other uses. And yes, I'll tell you what, conditional uses, there are ways to find ways to get in where other things can, as it was stated, morph. Morph, morph, morph. So, yes, they can have 25 seats. And I'm speaking only on the conditional use because the site plan, I don't see how you can put that little, that outdoor thing between the sidewalk and the building there. I don't know. But that's the site plan issue. I'm talking about the conditional issue. So if you approve this conditional use, you have opened the door for expanded activities beyond what's mentioned. And the last thing I'll say, as someone who's occasionally gone on boats, not as much as when my dad had a boat down there. But usually, if you're going to go on the boat, you've already bought your ice, and you've already made your sandwiches, and you already packed your coolers. Maybe there's, you know, a couple of things you might have forgot, but I can't see that being the purpose of this establishment. It's more for the tourists walking by. Yes, some local people can come and establishment. But as Mr. Vessi pointed out in from the applicant's testimony, if he can't do it in the business form that he's mentioning, it's not profitable enough to do. And I can understand that, but I can't see where that particular conditional use supports the intent of the WD-1A waterfront district. Thank you.
Thank you. And next person against? Yeah, if there's none against, yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, BJ Wolf, 412 Denise Street. My wife and I have a couple of businesses now on Tarpon Avenue who've really started pouring ourselves into the heart of this community, trying to really be good stewards to the community. And, you know, we hear a lot of things. And for anybody that's probably seen me up here speaking, I'm gonna probably be a broken record. I'm an absolute pro-business individual for the city. And anything somebody's willing to do to put their own skin in the game, we need to seriously consider. People come into our retail store all the time, and they're always asking about what else is new, what's coming down. We love the way that it's moving. I don't think I've ever heard anybody say, "Oh, my gosh, you guys have lost your heritage. You've lost what the city is about." They feel we're moving progressively, but still maintaining that small-city charm. This is one of those instances where, my gosh, we're not even talking about parking. He's got parking on-site. I mean, how often are we gonna be able to produce new businesses here when we know that, when everything that we've talked about with Cohatch and everything that's going on with that, that there's not enough parking? This is a guy that's willing to spend his money for this city, for this community. I mean, win, lose, fail. You know, I mean, he's willing to put the skin in the game. I think that this city ought to really embrace that, that entire philosophy. And I think it would be an absolute shame, the one thing that we do here is that it's, everybody thinks it's impossible to get a business going here in Tarpon. And I really genuinely hope that this dais here understands that when you're putting your skin in the game, we hope that the community supports it. And they will, they're either gonna support it or they're not. But he's willing to take that risk. I think this board and this planning commission and this entire city ought to rally behind that because it's not, it takes a lot for somebody to put that out there. And I couldn't speak more highly for anybody that wants to give it a try. And I can unequivocally tell you, we see thousands of customers, you know, and I just opened up my second business on Tarpon Avenue, and nobody says, "Oh, my gosh, you've lost your heritage." Not once. Not once. All right, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I really appreciate everybody sitting up here and just appreciate, you know, citizens like Ken that are looking to add to the, what makes the city great. So thank you all very much.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments either way at this point? All right, seeing none, that brings us back to staff. Do you have any rebuttal comments or final comments?
None.
All right, that brings us to the applicant. Would you like to make rebuttal or final comments?
Oh, I've got a handful. The one concern was the signage. That's already, that's already been done. The Heritage Preservation Board approved the signage as we submitted it. So that really isn't even an issue for you guys. The... I mean, as far as, you know, this is really, I see a lot of, a lot of concern about, like, this turning into a tourist. Well, I'm not gonna argue with you that tourists aren't gonna come in there. I'm really hoping it's a locals place. But the reality is, this is a tourist town. That is the lifeblood. The sponge docks still purely only exist for the tourism. There is some commercial, I'm not trying to kick anybody in the teeth. But the reality is, the sponge business is the tourist business of Tarpon Springs. We're the sponge capital of the world. So I don't understand the reverence or ill feelings toward the tourists. That's our lifeblood. I think that's why we want to share this town with everybody. I think we, I mean, you've heard about the traffic. I mean, it's an abundant amount. I don't think we're gonna add to it. BJ mentioned, we do have the parking, so parking's not gonna be an issue down here. You're not gonna have cars parked all over the place. The, I want to make it clear that the 25-person limit includes the seating outside. That we're not trying to go at 25 inside and then add that. We didn't. We kept it. 25 is really very limited. It is not a restaurant. I think you could go call anybody in a restaurant business, and they'd laugh at you if they said, you know, "You're gonna start a business with 25 seats." So that's not our intent. I mean, other things that we're gonna do there is sell ice and beer and bait and stuff like that for people to come in, grab their six-pack and their box of squid and a bag of ice and go on down the road. That's one of the things we intend on offering. Probably even have a small amount of bait and tackle. I don't know where it's gonna go. I can tell you, it's not gonna go beyond the 25 seats. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sell what sells and entertain what everybody wants, and that is to see the building. We're gonna try and make, where people have full access to the entire building, not just the front, so they can see the coffee roasters. I wished I had brought pictures of them. Coffee roasters are phenomenal-looking machines. They have a very old-timey look. These are made by Santa Fe. And it's just, everything will be nostalgic about the building. I've actually gone to great lengths on the inside to do wall coverings in the metal that's on the outside because I didn't want to corrupt the nostalgic look of the building. And I'll be honest with you, it's kind of hard when you're dealing with modern materials and you're trying to keep, you know, keep that look. It takes a lot of effort, and it is something I passionately care about. Like I said, the signage is already done. I really don't think, oh, well, I mean, really, it's not for discussion. I'm not saying that you can't consider it, but it is really not for discussion. It's already been settled. The, we do plan on selling sponges. You know, I get asked all the time, "Do you sell sponges?" That's probably the biggest question I get asked. I get people standing at the door, "Do you sell sponges?" And, you know, we don't, I don't, I'm not open for business, so I tell them, "No, but wait till we get the cafe." The, you know, like I said, it does support tourism. The hours, I would like to see if there's a way we can meet a happy medium here. Like, I really would like the beer and alcohol because it does kind of go along with a sandwich. We're allowed to sell it as a package, but we're not allowed, you know, according to the city's recommendation. And again, this is a recommendation. It's not a, you know, it's not, they haven't dictated this by code or anything else. This has been dictated by a feeling. So we'd like to have that for the sandwich crowd. The, we'd keep the hours seven to two? And keep, and like I said, I mean, we're in a box on the 25 seats. I mean, that's a given. We can't, you know, like Robin Hancock said, we cannot go outside of that without going through this whole process again. So again, you're not gonna lose your control of what you grant tonight.
When talking about the alcohol, I was a little unclear on what you were saying. Are you saying the beer and wine sales not for on-premise or for on-premise?
No. What I actually wanted to apply for is what's called a four COP, which would allow me to sell for consumption onsite and offsite. So I could sell the six-packs, or I could sell you a single beer.
Does, my question would be, does the license distinguish between prepackaged alcohol? Or is it something like where there's taps or in open containers for service?
The license, yes, does describe that because if you don't have a license for on-premise, you can't have consumption on-premise.
Right.
You can have, you can have, like, package sale where people can buy it, one, a six-pack or whatever, and then take it out with them.
Okay.
Yeah, so there is a distinction on the licensing.
Yeah, the four cups would allow, like, taps and bottles of wine, glasses of wine.
Yes.
Glasses of beer.
And like I had mentioned, we would love to get in the cider.
The offsite would just be containers?
That's kind of what I thought, is that there was a difference there between, I just wanted to make sure that the license was appropriate.
Yeah.
And if you all limit it to off-premise.
And that's something that the licenses can be suspended. I mean, you know, it's...
Just one point of distinction. A four COP is beer, wine, and hard alcohol.
That's true.
A two COP is beer and wine only.
Oh.
So...
Well, then I, then that's my fault. I thought the distinction was there was in and out.
No.
It's not, so two COP will let you do in and out.
So there's two licenses. A two AP, you can get two licenses if necessary. A two APS is beer and wine to go. A two COP is beer and wine for on-premise consumption. I think you can add a two APS to a two COP. So I think you can get there. We're mostly concerned with the on-premise consumption, so...
Right.
You said times, 7:00 AM to 2:00?
Yeah, I'm very open to a 7:00 to 2:00 agreement.
I thought I heard earlier you were saying that you were asked if you would be selling sponges, and you said you just...
Novelty stuff. I mean, every, I mean, most everybody sells something. You know, a t-shirt or whatever. I mean, and I have made promises over the years that I would incorporate sponges.
Can I throw something off the wall? Would you consider some recognition to the history and put something dedicated to a story about the history of that building?
Oh, no, absolutely. I know a lot about Mother Mears, and I'm a gardener myself. Actually, I had some really pretty gardens around there.
But something to reflect that building and its history, where people that do come in, they tell us...
A point of order, I think we're, are we getting a little off track? Attorney Kardashian, it's 8:30. I think, I feel like we're getting off track of the approved uses here.
I'm no more off track than what started the beginning of the...
We're talking about retail, t-shirts and sponges now. I don't think that's approved uses. 8:30, and I'm just asking a point of order to see where we are on track here.
He's asking him regarding the conditional use, so I think that that's okay.
I mean, it's sort of like a time limit.
The one thing I do want to point out is I do remember, and I know the order was in there, that the Historic Preservation Board, there were discussions regarding some of what you're talking about in terms of making sure there was an adequate recognition of the history of the building. And there was some discussion of that. I'm not sure how that was incorporated into the order.
I didn't see anything, that's why I asked.
Yeah, it wasn't incorporated in the condition.
They didn't put any, they didn't put any provisos on me, but, you know, as I'd stated, I have pictures from Ham Sally from, I mean, back at the turn of the century, and I do plan to post those up for people to see.
And in a point of order, is the applicant aware that those have to be presented to the Planning and Zoning before they go for the board? I'm just talking to the attorney right now. Before the Board of Commissioners, there's no changes in the application until then? Between us and as far as posting photos?
You're talking about photos of...
He's referring to photos, yeah.
Oh, well...
Just making sure that he knows that the application now...
Yeah, you can't add to the application.
But, but wait a minute. The application only covers the outside of the building, not the inside.
I know, I know. But she's saying, what she's saying is that you can't add additional materials between now and when this goes before the Board of Commissioners.
And you've added additional materials, like, between your initial presentation and just now?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what the concern is here. I was asked if there'd be some, you know, way to celebrate the history of the building, and I said, "Yes, I'm gonna hang pictures of actual..."
She's not looking to approve the pictures. The Board of Commissioners cannot approve pictures that you hang in your building, and this board cannot approve pictures that you hang in your building.
Correct.
I mean, all we could do in that regard would be put a condition that said there would be some sort of display that would reflect that, but...
Absolutely. I would agree to that.
My question was about the interior of the building, not the exterior. Any artwork that that man wishes to put in, as I understand, is not a part of this application, right?
Correct.
Correct.
Not even a condition of the application?
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a, just a clarification. Mr. Seiya, did I hear you say that you thought that operating hours of 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the seven's early enough, but 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM is what we're...
And that's a seven-day-a-week jobby? 7:00 AM to 2:00 PM, seven days a week?
Yeah, and I don't, and... Yeah, I, and I don't, and, and that, I would, I would like the per- permission to do seven days a week, but to be honest with you, I, I don't think we're gonna be open on Sunday.
I just wanted to make sure I heard that right. I was thinking seven PM to two AM.
I, I, you know, and to be honest with you-
That's why I needed the clarification. Thank you very much.
I wanted to reach a good accord here with y'all, but, but at some point, it just kinda feels like we're getting into the, into the weeds.
Any further questions for, for the applicant of, or any further final comments?
Um...
You got anything to add, Robin?
It's, yeah, it's, it's just the applicant at this point.
These are, these, I know, but these, I got two people, my wife and, and, and my contractor that could kick me if they want to.
Um, one thing I would ask of staff is can you put up here the exact site plan? Because I know there were different elevations and different things that were included in the packet and that we reviewed that were provided to the Historic Preservation Board. But what I'm looking to have is for the board's consideration, the exact site plan that is up for consideration. And do you know the number of this slide and the materials for the record? Does it say on there?
I'd like to speak to that, too. One of the reasons why we kept going back to TRC was the drainage. And, um, I'll just make it quick this way. We, we actually went to great pains to-
Slide number eight.
To make the property is, the off-flow of the property is actually better when we're done than when we started, even with the addition of a building. We only added eighty square feet because the, the slab that's there will be abated. We're only adding a new slab that's eighty square feet more. We've, actually, we're gonna raise the grading along Roosevelt, uh, with, uh-
Please make sure you're on the microphone.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're gonna, we're gonna slow, slow the grading by, by raising the, the Roosevelt exposure up. The, the highest part of the property is over towards St. Michael's Shrine, and it all flows toward West Park and Roosevelt. And we actually purposely slowed the grading down to actually capture more of the off-flow. So the, the site plan grading, or, you know, the off-flow from the property is, is significantly improved. I think the, we didn't, we purposely, well, the, the apron for the, to entrance to the parking will be out of, out of red brick pavers that are permeable. Um, that's one. To try to capture water, you gotta have something because otherwise it'll just, everything will just run out. Um, and the, uh, and the rest of it will be pervious. Um, so, I mean, we've tried to keep the look. I didn't want, you know, I don't want asphalt. I, you know, I could've equally used, done a, a concrete, um, apron or, or an asphalt apron, but we purposely did the red brick to, to, uh, you know, complement the building and the datedness of it. The road, actually, West Park and Canal Street are red brick. The, they have paved over the bricks on Roosevelt, unfortunately. Um, I would've loved for that whole corner to be red brick. I don't know if I can get anybody to agree to do that or not.
Okay.
And just, just to add, so this is the, this is a part of the, uh, site plan page. The full site plan set you would be approving is, uh, at the end of this item in your packet. It's Exhibit A of the resolution, and it's ten pages long.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, at this point, we'll bring the item back to the board for consideration. I need a motion in a second.
Um, before you do that, Mr. Chairman, um, I would like to give a curative instruction because there were multiple comments from board members, um, about this application and about the history of this property and some other items. Um, you cannot consider anything that a board member says as evidence. It is not evidence. Okay, so the only evidence that you can consider is the evidence and testimony from city staff and city witnesses, evidence and testimony from the applicant, and the evidence and testimony from the members of the public that were sworn and came and gave, uh, information. So anything that a fellow board member said, um, is not considered evidence for the purpose of your consideration on this item. Does everybody understand that? All right, thank you.
Oh, and thank you for your service. I do appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion in a second. Oh, yes, we do. Uh, I don't think anybody mentioned the, the petition that we have that's part of the file also.
Can I comment on that?
No.
Well, I think I should be able to, but, and, and I'm gonna just say this to you, I guess. That petition-
Attorney, is he allowed to?
The petition, the first half of the petition is-
But the public hasn't heard the petition either, so I, I just wanna get the rules done.
Okay, well, that's why I'm asking.
Before you comment on something that hasn't been-
Okay, stop.
Please.
So, hold on. The evident, the petition that they're talking about was part of the packet. Ms. McNeese offered it into evidence, so it is part of the evidence, and it was published beforehand. Okay, everybody up here received a copy of the packet.
Okay.
Um, and Ms. McNeese offered the city's file on this matter into evidence during her presentation.
Do, do I not get to comment on the packet?
You did have the opportunity during your presentation.
But I didn't, but I didn't know it was gonna be introduced here until that.
It had already been introduced, and I believe it was also provided to you as well.
Yes, it was.
Mm-hmm.
But, but I didn't know that there was going to be a discussion on it. I thought maybe it was... I have a couple comments if you so inclined.
If the board wants to make a motion to have him make comments on the packet, then you can do that via motion. If you want to move on with the hearing, you can do that. Otherwise, I would just leave the packet as it is. You saw the, you, you have all seen it. You all know what's in it, and it's part of your consideration for evidence. So if you wanna let him talk, then you make a motion.
I, I, I don't, I don't think him explaining it is necessary. I think the package itself, the petition, talks more about the preservation of the building than anything, and I think we kinda beat dead, dead, that to a dead horse. I think it was up to the Heritage Preservation Board. That's a lot of what this was referring to, if I remember correctly.
I, I would prefer to move on also. I think, I think we're done discussing.
I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay, so, need a motion in a second in the affirmative, and then we can discuss further.
Uh, you know what? I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion then, if nobody's going to, um, for discussion purposes only, cause I'm still, I'm not sure what I wanna do. But I'm gonna make a motion to approve, where's my glasses? Do I have my glasses? Approve the applicant with the following conditions. The condition cited by staff, also, uh, the condition that, that, uh, uh, beer and wine not be included, be, be a, a, in that rec, in that, in our recommendation.
Okay, so, to be clear-
Package, package, okay, but on consumption on premises, no.
Okay, that's what I was asking, was for clarification because staff recommended no on-premise consumption, and you want to stick with that.
Yeah, no on-premises consumption, just package.
Okay. And also, I wanted to clarify that this is for the conditional use only at this point.
Correct.
Okay.
Discussion?
Could, could I ask for additional clarification on what those conditional uses were? That staff recommended?
Oh, you're gonna-
Maximum twenty-five persons.
Just so we got it specifically clear. I think it's twenty, twenty-five persons.
Five persons.
And, uh, um, and, and I'm gonna add to my motion, cause I'm gonna hold him to, to, to his comment with regard to hours of operation. Um, uh, seven, I'll give you an extra hour, seven to three.
AM.
No, seven AM to three PM.
But, but, I mean, seven AM.
Yeah.
Two, three, yes, that's what I meant, yeah. To three PM.
And if I, cause I can't find it fast enough, one of staff recommendations was there was no music.
No music, yeah.
Yeah, no out, no out.
No outside entertainment.
No outside entertainment.
And does the seating, does that, there had, there seemed to be some differences of opinion that the seating was only for interior, yes, by Florida Building Code, but that would actually open the door to unlimited outside seating within a zone that's not there, so...
Staff's, staff's recommendation was for a combined indoor and outdoor seating limit of twenty-five.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. I mean, food trucks is not a thing we could put on there as a prohibition, but, uh, or can we? Let me ask, let me ask, uh, counsel. And that's not so much for the applicant, is it, for any future owner?
Right, so... I'm struggling to come up with a reason why you couldn't limit that.
Well, then, if, and I wanna-
Because, because what you have here is an application for a food retail establishment, and what, and if what you're looking to do is to prohibit them from essentially doubling down, increasing capacity, increasing traffic flow, um, I could see that as being a reasonable condition, especially when you consider the intent of this to support, um, the industry around it. Um-
Yeah, that, and that's way part of the intent. That would go way off the intent, so, so, so I, I would like to add that as a condition as well. No food truck.
Is it no food truck? Mike, can I, can I ask a question to add to your conditions?
Go ahead.
Okay. Well, I mean, a little bit of the, the retail of the sponges, I mean, cause that's going to start competing with our stores down at the Sponge Docks.
You know what? It's a, it's a sponge warehouse, so, so-
But, but, but apparently they're, they're, they can take, sponge has already been decided by Historic Preservation. They can take that off, and we have no say.
Okay, I'm not gonna tell what a person can sell. No, I'm, I'm not gonna stop what a person can and cannot sell.
Okay.
So...
It's, it's selling more sponges.
So, I think it supports the sponge industry if they sell more sponges.
Well, it sells them over there, yeah.
So, all right.
Not at the exchange.
But I need clarification on the food truck. So the food truck, you say, may-
No.
-increase traffic?
Well, no, no. My, my concern is food truck, food truck will add a different character to the property that is beyond, I think, I, I know that this applicant is looking at that as far as, but any future owner, if they wanted to be, have the ability to expand, because food truck does not come under conditional uses. It's an administrative, if I remember correctly, it's administrative decision that's done at City Hall.
Right.
And so, if it's part of a, a restriction or prohibition in our, uh, 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 in our approval, if it's approved, then that would preclude them from doing that anyway. So that just closes the door for any future owner for that opportunity, if I explain that correctly.
But in the z, in the conditional wouldn't allow that to happen, right now as it is? I'm asking, I'm asking the staff right now.
Um, a food truck, they could apply for a, a site plan approval for a food truck, which is, um, processed administratively. It would have to meet all the conditions in that section of the code. It would have to be accessory to the main, um, eating and drink, or drinking establishment.
Just like any other applicant that would do such as the one that was down the street with, at one time, what was it called, the Bistro?
That's correct, just like that one.
Okay, just needed to understand.
All right, so that's my motion with its conditions. I don't know if you wanna repeat them or, or-
I can read what I have if you like.
Okay, so, but I guess my conditions are, are, my motion to approve with the following conditions. Limited seating to total twenty-five indoor and outdoor. Um, package, uh, 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 beer and wine sales only, no consumption on premises, uh, uh, fruit, a food truck prohibition, um, and the hours from seven to three.
Um, in addition, you had also said-
Did I read the seven AM to three PM? I still wasn't sure about that.
Yes. Um, also, you had said the staff conditions. There were two additional staff conditions. One was, um, compliance with the, um, Heritage Preservation Board Certificate of Approval, and the no outdoor entertainment.
Yeah, yes, the outdoor entertainment. Sorry, I missed, I missed it.
I have a, I need a clarification on number one, though. When I read what it says here about the maximum twenty-five persons indoor and outdoor seating capacity and shall not sell alcoholic beverages for on-premise consumption.
Yeah, that's what it said.
So, I know, let me finish my question. This package beer, if they sell a six-pack to a person that wants to take the six-pack, and he's prayed, he or she's paid for that six-pack, it's theirs, can they consume that on the premise?
No.
Wanna make sure.
I'd second that motion.
Do we have further board discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call?
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambellis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. Thank you all. Uh, that brings us to our next item. Oh, yeah, let's take a five-minute break.
Wait, you, um, you also have the site plan.
Oh, that's right.
So remember, this had two components.
Yes, another motion.
Okay, another, a motion to approve the site plan.
So the site plan had two conditions on it?
Yes.
With conditions.
Okay.
Let's, let us look at them real quick.
Clarify for the record, um, which specific plans you were approving.
Second.
Um, and that was slide number eight, and then the, uh, ten pages of materials connected to the resolution in your packets.
So moved. And I would second that.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, let's have a roll call.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambellis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkudus?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes. All right, let's take five. Uh, be back quick so we can wrap up. All right, let's take five, be back quick, so we can wrap up. Everybody ready to pick back up? Yeah. All right, that brings us to item seven on our agenda, application 2358, that's conditional use approval for property at 427 East Tarpon Ave. Do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, this is a conditional use request at 427 East Tarpon Avenue on about a third of an acre. This is in the downtown gateway character district of the city's special area plan, and it's in the T4A transect, that's residential plus retail in office. And the proposal is for a hotel. So, this is an existing owner occupied inn, it's the Blue Bayou that probably you all are familiar with, was approved as an inn back around the year 2000 or so. There is, it's, it's, was approved as a seven-room plus owner occupied property, so it has existing parking on site, there are eight guest rooms proposed with this hotel, creating a hotel where there is no onsite manager or owner occupant onsite, so we have eight rooms for the guests, and then there is a common kitchen, laundry, and living room in this building. This is, again, on the north side of Tarpon Avenue, between Gross Avenue and Levis Avenue. There's an oblique of the site showing the parking and the building. And as you know, this is, this is sort of a mix of uses, some residences, small office buildings and shopping centers, and some residences that have been converted into office or other use. Again, north side of Tarpon, this is the downtown gateway character district leading into the downtown here, and in the T4A transect, again, leading into that downtown transect along the Tarpon Corridor. And this is the survey and site plan, so the applicant is not proposing any, any physical change to the site, no exterior innovations, no additions, nothing like that. There is existing parking on site, there are nine parking spots that are existing paved spots. And this is the floor plan, first floor and second floor showing the eight rooms, showing on the first floor the kitchen, laundry, and living room that would be used as some common area by the guests. The applicant has included in your packet an extensive explanation and illustrations of how this property will be managed. They've also included the booklet that they hand out to the guests. Basically, some of the features are that this would be, have 24-hour access to a staff, these are off-site staff that would be, you'd be able to contact by phone, whether you're the guest or any city employee, law enforcement, and so on, that would be responding to anything at the property. And so, they have all of those, all that contact information in the handout, and it would be posted on site. They're using cameras, noise monitors, those sorts of things to try to monitor, monitor the activity of the guests on the site. And they would visit the site every day, but the guests would be responsible for taking out the trash and basically keeping the property clean. Again, Blue Bayou property, this is, this is the property, and this is showing the assigned parking here, it's basically paved parking with some landscape islands between, except there's no, no landscaping in them. One of the items that we discuss in the staff report is that this property does have access to a rear alley. This is the, the alley, it's a paved alley, heavily used for access, garbage disposal and all that, garbage pickup. And there is a gate, the applicant's property is fenced with a 12-foot gate. This is what it looks like from the applicant's property, here's the edge of the parking lot, here's the fencing and the palms, and then there's a 12-foot gate leading to the alley. And I'll talk about that in a minute. So, the existing built property is in the special area plan, it conforms to the SMART Code and Land Development Code requirements. The SMART Code does encourage alley access, this property did have alley access, it was required in the 2000 resolution for the inn, approving the inn, and it was installed, and I looked at aerial photography, it looks like it was removed or sodded over, basically, I think, in about 2019, and this fence was erected at that time, around that time with the gate. So, that access was removed, and it should be restored in, in conformance with the SMART Code intent. We believe the, the, the use is compatible with the area, so it's been operating as an inn for a long time, without really any, any problem, significant problem we know of. So, we're gonna have eight rooms of guests, much, you know, fairly lower than their allowable density of 15 for this property. But is it appropriate? So, our main concern is the lack of an onsite manager even, doesn't have to be the owner, but someone who lives there and manages the property, can oversee the use of the common facilities. The kitchen's probably of a little more concern than, than the other, but could there be a generation of any kind of, of problems, emergencies, safety, code, you know, complaints, noise or anything that would generate a code enforcement complaint, because the city will be the one to be, to be called by a neighbor. Obviously, a guest can contact the, the managers. So, it doesn't really meet a strict hotel setup, that was staff's main concern on this. Again, it's compliant with the comprehensive plan, a special area plan, and the density, and this is in a historic district, it does represent a continuation of an adaptive reuse, and the rear alley access also is something that the historic guidelines are, are looking for, so that's another reason we would like to see that restored. We feel like the operation itself, if it can be properly controlled, wouldn't be much different than the inn, so we aren't looking at really any adverse impact on property values. Again, the city can't serve this property, it's served now, and it can continue to be served with eight rooms. So, this, this is an appropriate, compatible use in a historic district on its face, as far as being a, basically a short-term stay for guests in town. And again, we feel that it's, it complies with all the codes. This property is, has sprinklers and smoke alarms installed, and the fire marshal will be verifying that everything is up to code when they go to pull a business tax receipt for this property. So, again, we are recommending that you look at issues that may arise from the lack of an onsite manager, and we can have the applicant explain what their management model is, and how they intend to address any concerns. If you do recommend approval, we have five conditions we'd like to offer, they do need a local business tax receipt, that's, that's what they would come and get after the conditional use approval, there's no building permit here or any of that. We do want them to restore the alley and pull a permit for a driveway, but for the use itself, we'd be looking for the business tax receipt, no more than eight guest rooms with two people per room, as they proposed, restoring the rear alley access. And then, some conditions regarding designation of a responsible party who can carry out all of these activities, be available, be able to receive any notices, be able to respond to law enforcement, and those sorts of things. And then, posting inside the property and on the outside appropriate information for the guests and for city staff or law enforcement that needs, needs that information at their fingertips on the property immediately, that would be the fifth condition. And with that, I'll stop, are there any questions?
I, I do have a couple, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The first is regarding the definition of an inn. According to the code, the definition of an inn is six to 12 bedrooms, and a hotel is determined as being 12 units and up, but this is basically consideration to deem this a hotel. So, can we talk a little bit about what they're actually approving if they do that?
Yes, we, because this is a conditional use that has, that's coming before you, it doesn't, it doesn't obviously fit either of those, because it's not owner occupied, so it's not an inn, and it's over the, whatever you just said, eight, yeah.
It's over the number eight.
Sorry, it's under 12 units. So, so, so it doesn't fit either one, it, it seems to be an appropriate use. We felt like that, that code, those definitions in the SMART Code really seem more like guidance, but we felt that you could vary those numbers as part of the conditional use if you thought that the operation was appropriate.
So, so basically, they're just changing the business model from what they had, for like, if this applicant changed the business model from what was there before. And so, we're talking about this being a hybrid of, of, between a, what it was versus what it's going to be. So, it's not a hotel, under our...
Essentially, that's correct, you know, so...
But you're putting it as a hotel in here, as boutique, so, I mean, is that city a precedent or something?
Yeah, the, so there's a, well, actually, the livery stable was a very similar, it was a conditional use for a hotel, because they did not have onsite management or, you know, somebody living there. So, essentially, you know, there, under the SMART Code, you, you can, you can deviate from the code in two ways, one is through a warrant, and the other is through a variance. A warrant is something that is a deviation, but that, but that is supported by the overall intent, and so, as long as you find that, that the overall intent is still being maintained, then you can, you can approve a warrant to that minimum 12 number, or greater than 12 number of room limit, if, I think that's what the attorney would probably like us to add to the application, just for, for posterity.
And also, for the record, your name and position with the city.
Oh, I'm sorry, Renee Vincent, planning and zoning director, thank you.
We would deem this as a warrant.
Yes.
Not for your arrest, Renee, but just a warrant.
It's the terminology that appears in your SMART Code, that's, that's not common in other codes, but it, it's...
Yeah, it's a warranted deviation from the more than 12 rooms.
Okay, does that have to be in the form of a motion that it's a warrant, or does it, or is it implied? Because...
I would add it as part of the, the findings for the condition of approval, or the, for the conditional use.
Can I have a question? Because I had a really hard time getting this material before the meeting. Was this used as now, what's the use now?
An inn.
Okay, so, I mean, I'm just surprised to see, I mean, we had all this talk about how Tarpon needs this boutique hotel, and yet, all the downtown proponents just disappeared after the SpongeDocks application. This is just weird to me, but, oh, whatever, I'm all for it.
The, the other question I had was with respect to the kitchen. So, currently with the inn, you have somebody that's technically on the property 24/7, that can control the kitchen, what comes and goes for the kitchen, and by switching it, you're not going to have that anymore. What, if anything, would you propose to kind of handle that type of a situation, where you have guests that would have unfettered access to potentially other people's food?
Well, I guess we weren't all that concerned about whether they had access to other people's food. You know, are there, are there gonna be children as guests? Are, how are people gonna work out who's using the kitchen when? Could there be conflicts? Could there be safety issues that arise? There's no one that would immediately be able to address those issues. Someone could call one of these managers, and they would come to the, be able to come to the property, is what the management explanation says. is what the, uh, management explanation says. But we are a little bit concerned in, in a boarding house or a bed and breakfast or an inn, normally the owner or the site manager is the one working in the kitchen. And, and the guests might eat together or something like that. So we're a little concerned with, um.
The food preparation.
The extent of activity going on in there, whether there could be conflicts arising. They did say, they do have, I know that they're gonna post a set of house rules. So they've got that. Um, but we just weren't, um, it does not fit a straight hotel model. And the livery stable example given earlier, of course, there is no common kitchen, no common, you know, um, area like that. So that fit a little better, the, the one that you.
So the, the livery did not have a common kitchen?
Uh, this is something that the applicant can address for us, I suspect.
Yes.
So are there any more questions for staff?
I have one, I'm, thank you. Um, it has eight rooms right now. It's gonna continue to have eight rooms. There's no physical change to the structure of the building.
Correct.
No, this, you're talking, it's a change in business model. Why does there need to be a change in the business model? Is that the removal of the oversight, of the onsite oversight? I guess, what, why is this application before us now?
An inn is defined as an owner occupied.
Okay, just so I understand. So the idea is we're gonna remove the daily oversight, turn that into a rental room, and then that building runs on its own?
Yes, and the common areas in the building now become accessible to all the guests for combined use.
Okay, thank you.
And how many people were notified of this, or any?
I will look that up, but yeah, the 500.
If we could have that as a normal, you know, because it's in the application. Um, and it, it's a question that, you know, it, it says that all these things were done, and yet the numbers are never available. And it's super important.
We can, okay, we can provide the numbers.
That we have the number of people who are notified, especially when there's nobody here.
Okay, if there's no more questions for the staff, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Good evening. My name is Jenny Santillis. I reside at 3017 Key Harbor Drive in Safety Harbor, 34695. I am Greek, I've been.
Actually, were you sworn in?
I was sworn in, yes. I'm Greek, I've been in the area in Pinellas County since 1979. So very passionate about the area. Last year, um, well, let's go back to 2004. We, uh, started, we took over, my, my husband at this time, Steve Christopoulos and myself, we took over a failing charter school in the area, Plato Academy Charter Schools. And it was, the day we took it over, it was at thirty-four students. Um, to this day, now, we have nine schools in the area, Plato Academy Charter School. We teach all kinds of students from everywhere. We give a private education at the public school price. So where am I going with this? Last year, we sold one of our schools in Pinellas Park. And with the funds that we got, we turned around. And since we love Tarpon Springs and we're so passionate about it, everything Greek, we put in over $3 million, 3.727, to be exact, in purchasing the Blue Bayou Inn and three other properties in Tarpon Springs. So that's our little background. We are very passionate about, um, anything that has to do with the public. And we have a lot of residential properties. We have a lot of commercial properties. We, um, do real estate. So we're very focused on taking care of public needs, public safety. Clearly, that comes with all our education background, dealing with children and parents and students and all that. Um, I would like to introduce my business partner, Melissa Palowski. And we are doing this business together. Would you say a couple words? And we also have our engineer here on site, Hoosh, who's been in this area forever.
Hi, Melissa Palowski. Um, I was sworn in. Um, my current address is 427 East Tarpon Ave, room number eight. Um, so I know we've been here for a long time, and you guys are all very tired. But I discovered Tarpon at a really hard point in my life. I was ready to leave Florida. Something traumatic had happened to my family. And I just felt like Florida was very wide open and didn't have a community feel. I lived in Palm Harbor, everything looks alike. Came down here and fell in love with Tarpon. Like, I can't even tell you. I felt like it was a very quaint community. I loved the history, I loved everything about it. So, long story short, I moved into a residence that we now own before I even began working with my business partner, 419 East Tarpon Ave. Loved everything about it. Um, fast forward, I'm in this business. Um, we sold the school, and I say to her, "Look, I love Tarpon. Um, I know my previous landlord is selling 419 East Tarpon Ave. I think we should invest." Then we found out the Blue Bayou is looking to sell. And she was a little hesitant just because it's not brick and mortar, you know? It's wood. And she was like, "Ooh, I don't know." She came down to Tarpon and was like, "Wow, this place is so developed, it's growing," and was right on board. So, um, the reason we're looking to change the business model is just, we're so involved. Um, to give you an example, we had, um, a situation where a guest got upset with his girlfriend and called the police. I knew the police were there because I was at dinner before the police even contacted me because of the Ring camera went off, and I was like, "What's going on?" Handled it, they were so happy with, you know, our handling of the situation. We've had no other incidents. And I wasn't even on site at that point, and I was aware that somebody was there. So, um, our plan is just to be able to rent the entire inn because we've already had people reach out to us wanting to rent it for, like, um, family gatherings. They're not allowed outside, obviously. We would have those limitations for noise. Um, and also because the room eight, which was always used as the manager's room, is the only handicapped accessible room. It's on the outside. So we would like to open that up to be able to give access to people that wanna come visit and have handicap access. Do you have any questions? Sorry, have I?
I do. I do, so.
Yeah.
So, so the kitchen's a, is basically a common area. Everybody gets to share in the kitchen.
Correct.
Um, I mean, I guess the concern is, like you said, the police were called on one incident.
From, from a guest, yeah.
Yeah, but it had nothing to do with the kitchen, but.
No.
But, I mean, is there, how you plan on resolving kitchen disputes? Lack of a better term.
So before we presented this to you, even though I'm on site, we've tried to kind of see if it would work. Because there's no point of presenting it to you guys, having it approved, and have it blow up in our face, right? So the kitchen has been shared by all the guests, even though I'm in roommate, and we haven't had a single issue. I, again, um, knock on wood, haven't had anybody complaining about stealing food, which is what I thought the main issue would be. I don't know what other issues are. But I really expected somebody to be like, "I bought some food and it's gone." Because we all hear roommate stories like that. And so haven't had any. Um, if there was an issue, again, I would have to be notified. Jenny would have to be notified, one of our team would be notified, and would have to use common sense and good judgment. And it would probably be, if somebody's really doing that, would replace whatever the food is and keep the guest happy, I mean, at the end of the day.
So, so you live in Safety Harbor, it'd be more difficult for you to react on site? That you live in Tarpon Springs, so you would be the one who would be the local person to react?
Yeah, I live right there now, but my main home is in Holiday. It's a nine-minute drive.
My concern would be, do you have proper liability insurance?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, because beyond any, the police is gonna go beyond that if there's any insurance.
Yeah, and we have a bunch of properties under this LLC, so we have great insurance. And then in regards to the kitchen, we also have an Airbnb at Treasure Island. And I kind of look at it as, you know, when they say, "Who would monitor that?" And like, if people have conflicts wanting to use the kitchen. In Treasure Island, there's, I don't know, at least seventy-five different condos. And there's two barbecues. And so it's just common sense. If somebody else is barbecuing, you wait. Same thing with sharing a pool. If you think someone's taking, and they only have people on site till five.
Exactly.
And so then you have to call, like, an emergency line. There's no Ring camera, there's no noise monitor, like. And so we've tried to put some things into place that will really allow us to actively manage the property while not being right on site all the time.
Do you have, like, small refrigerators and microwaves in the rooms alone? Like, in college where, like?
That was her idea. I actually didn't like that idea. We've talked about it because you do have guests that leave, and they leave, like, they're just not, how can I put it? Not everybody's as clean as you think they would be inside their rooms. So if you're encouraging them to bring food in the room.
For safety, that's kind of how they did apartments and, like, outside of schools.
Right.
That were associated with the school, but not. So that way you could have your privacy, so you could avoid issues like that.
Right. And we're not opposed to it, it's just bugs. You know, like, people leaving food out in the room. We tried to encourage them not to even eat in their room. There's no, like, tables, there's no place to sit down. We encouraged them to use the dining room. Um, we even bought an extra fridge because we were concerned that with seven rooms, two people, that's fourteen people. If someone's gonna stay for a week and they wanna do all their grocery shopping, they're gonna take up a bunch of space in the fridge, right? So somebody comes along and they throw food away. So we added a whole nother fridge. And we add labels and pens, too, so people can label their food.
It's unfortunate you don't have the support of the downtown community.
I know, right? But we.
They do like hotels at the SpongeDocks, but apparently not downtown.
We support the downtown. Like, we rave about places to go. You should see our welcome book, I'm sure you've looked at it. But we really try to highlight all the local attractions.
Downtown's great, I.
Yeah.
The coffee shops, the restaurants, everything is just ten steps away. But literally, anything that we take over, we just throw our heart and soul into it. And that's the, the best way of describing it.
We did add two more bikes because of the SpongeDocks. People were like, "Oh, it's a, you know, you're so close." But we don't wanna have to, like, drive down there because they won't enjoy their time. So we added two more bikes with helmets and everything, so people can have easy access.
Is the name of the inn the original name? So you just carried it over?
From when we bought it. And, and I would like to point that out, when we bought it, she had one reservation, and it was three months down the road. So there was no business to take over. We have really grown it, but I don't want it to be dependent on me. I want it to be dependent on the services we provide, how clean it is, because I'm not gonna be around forever, right? So I want them to fall in love with the area, fall in love what's there, and keep coming back. So we have reservations, we have people that have returned. Again, when we took it over, no tourism was coming in here. One, one reservation she had, and it was two months out. And we've done a really good job.
Can I say we have, uh, received the award of being one of our favorite accommodations in the area? So.
So I just, whatever you guys need from us, we're willing to do.
Is, there's no prepared food for guests?
We're not allowed to do that, no. I've had people ask, that's another issue, too. When I'm on site and they see me, you know, because I'll be there in the morning, they're like, "Oh, is breakfast included?" And I'm like, "Well, we got some oatmeal packets." But I can't cook anything, you know, because I'm not allowed to.
Right.
And so, um, and we do have a coffee bar, again, all stuff that's, you know, like pods and stuff. But no, we do not prepare any food.
And my, my only concern, and I'm sure you're well-versed in it, being, coming from the education field, uh, is food allergies. Would there be some sort of notification allowed by potential guests to, uh, to announce that to the others? Or to post something or a separate, separate facility for storage or something for gluten or peanuts? Or, you know, one of the hundred things that there are nowadays?
You know, I never thought about that, I'm glad you brought that up. I think that we could absolutely do, like, maybe this is a, you know, peanut-free zone, like, no peanut butter is allowed. And just so you know, even if we're not on site, somebody will be there every day, at least once a day. Because again, we invested a lot of money in this property, so we wanna keep an eye on it. I'm just gonna be very frank, we, we just installed a new roof, it's getting painted next week. We're not looking not to be active participants. Like, it's, it's a big investment for us. So I know you said that the guests are responsible for the trash. We tell them what the days are for the trash. I look on the Ring camera, the night before trash pickup's there, and if it hasn't been taken out, I'm gonna go out and do it, right? If I'm not there because I'm out, I'm messaging my handyman, "Hey, can you swing by?" So we ask them to do it, but you can't make them responsible to do it. What'd you say?
Like my son.
Right, right. If I knew how to make people actually do things, I would love my life so much better.
Okay, any further questions for the applicant? Seeing none, uh, we'll open public comments. Is there any members of the public here that wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, uh, I guess we'll bring it back to the board for consideration. Uh, need a motion in a second.
I'll, I'll, go ahead. I was gonna just go ahead and, and, uh, make a motion to consider this a warrant, to make sure that's on the record, um, to approve Resolution 2023-41, uh, and to include all the staff recommendations, which was one through three, four, A through D, and five, A through F.
And I would second that.
Is there any further board discussion?
Um, just if staff may be recognized, there were seventy people. Seven zero, seventy people notified.
Thank you.
Okay. It says, it says this was Nick's old girlfriend's house, I think. I had to put that on the record.
Then can we have a?
It's off the record.
That's not part of the motion.
That's not part of the motion.
Not part of the minutes.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Zambalis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
That brings us to the end of our regular session. I suppose everybody is gonna be agreeable with not convening a workshop session at this time. Since this is as late as it is. Are there staff comments, though, before we close?
Uh, no, you do have a workshop set for December 13th, that date. So, um, I'm assuming we will do that. And then your.
I will not be here for the 13th.
I won't be here for that.
Okay, then your next regular meeting is December 18th. You do have items for that. And, um, I did send, uh, the first version of Legislative Reporter today, so I'll keep sending that throughout the session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there board comments?
I'd, I'd like to request that next year, around the holidays, that we be considered to be off for this week. I don't think it was fair to the community that, that they didn't get an opportunity, a fair opportunity to come tonight to necessarily oppose things because it is a week off of school and everything else. And the Board of Commissioners changed their schedule. Um, we haven't had three agenda items, I don't think, since I've even been on the board, maybe. And then they all got scheduled, and I'm, I don't want it to become an actual intent of anyone to try to schedule something towards the end of the year during the holidays where people are definitely not gonna be around. And I will bring that to the Board of Commissioners over and over until that gets recognized because I think it's an extreme disservice to our community. And I will not stand by for it.
All right. If that's all, we stand adjourned. Happy Thanksgiving. Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
That was a, a big house.
Her father was a hot guy. Played for the LSU Tigers.